Another meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, November 3rd of 2025. If you wish to have a public comment, something to say about tonight's agenda, please bring, fill out a speaker card. They're located in the back of the room and bring it to our clerk, who is in the front of the room. And now traditionally and tonight, I will invite Monica Apuricio and Mariana Riviola to provide information to those who wish to participate in Spanish. But before we begin with them, I'd like to announce that we're transitioning to a new translation service for council meetings. And the new system Wordly is an AI-powered interpretation tool that will expand the availability, accessibility of our translations, as well as expand the number of languages that are available. And to access the translations online via Zoom, please use the link in the chat. And to access the translation in the room, you can scan the QR code that's on several walls and locations in the room. And then I also would be remiss if I did not pause to express our gratitude to our wonderful interpreters, Maria and Monica and Mariana and Martin, for their services through the years we've had them with us. And I have a bit of a proclamation, I don't think they know this, they're listening online. But, and it says, "Whereas the City of Petaluma would like to extend sincere appreciation and gratitude to our longtime Spanish language interpreters, Maria Galvez, Monica Apuricio, Martin Riveroli, and Mariana Riverola. And whereas their professionalism, reliability, and accuracy have ensured that Spanish-speaking residents can fully participate in our local government, helping make our processes more inclusive, transparent, and welcoming. And whereas their work has enabled community members to follow complex agendas and understand important policy discussions at city council meetings, and that access is essential to meaningful civic engagement, and their commitment has made a real difference for our residents, council, and staff." So now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the city council, do hereby extend our appreciation and gratitude for the years of partnership and service provided by Monica, Maria, Martin, and Mariana. So thank you to you where you are back in Zoom. Thank you all. They will, of course, continue to provide this service to our other committees, the Park and Rec Commission especially, and we look forward to continuing our work with you. And with that, can you come in now with the Spanish message, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Buenas noches. Me llamo Monica, estoy aquí con mi pareja de interpretación, Mariana. Estamos aquí hoy como intérpretes. Hoy este evento se llevará a cabo en español e inglés. Se usarán ambos idiomas activamente, así que usted podrá elegir un canal para participar en su idioma preferido después de que le hayamos explicado cómo funcionará la interpretación. Estaremos usando la función de interpretación de Zoom. Después que termine esta explicación, se activará la función de interpretación. Si usted se está conectando con su computadora, verá un icono de un mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si se está conectando con su tableta o teléfono, pulse en más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas, y a continuación elija su canal de idioma. Thank you, and we're ready.
Thank you very much. May we have a roll call for the evening, please?
Barnacle?
Present.
Kater Thompson?
Present.
DeCarly?
Here.
Now?
Here.
Quint?
Here.
Tribs?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please. At this point, I'd like to look up and down the dais and see if anyone proposes any changes from what we have as agenda tonight, and not seeing any, the agenda is adopted as published. And to start our meeting, we have several proclamations here. It's a good day. So our first proclamation is for Native American Heritage Month, and to help us with this, we have the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria Tribal Council Treasurer, Joan Harper, and Tribal Council Member-at-Large Lawrence Stafford to accept tonight. You can join us at the podium, which reads, "Whereas the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria, federally recognized tribe, is comprised of Southern Pomo and Coast Miwok people, and the lands now occupied by the City of Petaluma are the ancestral lands of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria. Whereas the Petaluma community acknowledges the Southern Pomo and Coast Miwok tribal histories and culture, contemporary issues, and the contributions of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria to Sonoma County, it's vital to the understanding of the tribe's origins and rich heritage. And whereas the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria maintain a harmonious relationship with the ecology of this area, including knowledgeable and respectful harvesting of animals and plants. Whereas the traditional culture and ecological knowledge of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria hold important value for all our community. And whereas the Petaluma community will benefit from more active and visible input of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with all the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim that the month of November 2025 shall be Native American Heritage Month to honor the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria, and the city council encourages business owners, educators, artists, and all our citizens to participate in making November an occasion for joy, learning, collaboration, and prosperity." Thank you. [applause] Thank you. Oprah Mikan Toich, on behalf of the entire tribal council, we wish to, we accept this proclamation. Thank you very much. Komolish. Thank you. Thank you. And also tonight, we have a proclamation for our Veterans' Day. And I'd like to invite Joe Noriel, Veteran and History Connection President, and Board Member to both the Veterans of Foreign Wars and American Legion Riders, to the podium to accept. And it reads, "Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedom and way of life, and whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, and whereas our veterans are brave, selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us, and whereas all Petalumans must strive to ensure that ours remains a land worthy of the great love our veterans have shown for it. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of the City of Petaluma, along with all the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2025, as Veterans' Day, and encourage people in our city to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights." Thank you. [applause]
Well, a big thank to you. I mean, I'm always get super excited for this time of year when we can really do something special for our veterans and for our community. So first and foremost, a big thank you to you, you know, our distinguished city council, our mayor, our city manager, I mean, our police department, our fire department, especially Public Works. I mean, we couldn't do this without the support of the city and city staff. So a big thank you for that. You know, a lot of people, I'm not going to say they take the parade for granted, but it's, you know, such a special thing and we're used to seeing each year that a lot of people don't know the history behind the parade. And it's huge, right? We're probably one of the largest in the Bay Area, but it wasn't always that way. It was really the dedication of three World War I veterans back in the 60s. They took it upon themselves and their own ideals of patriotism and virtually just walked the streets themselves. The main founder, he passed away, another one passed away, and it was just one solo person walking the parade route and picked up steam in the 80s and pretty much became the wonderful parade we have today. This year for 2025, we're honoring military women, so it's an especially important parade. A lot of people don't know it, but over 2.1 million women served in armed forces, and they've been serving since the American Revolution in some capacity. We're honored to have our grand marshals, the Redwood Empire Military Women, Unit 77. We have some members here today along with a few other veterans, if I could ask them to stand, veterans. We do this for these people and to thank them for our freedoms that we have for today. Highlights of the parade this year, I mean, there's always something going on. I think our oldest veteran, World War II veteran, he was on Omaha Beach. He'll be right up to the front. We're going to do some flyovers and picking up something we did last year. I mean, we get great support from our local Coast Guard base, and we did a swearing-in last year, and they're doing it again with new recruits, beginning of the parade in front of the Petaluma Museum. So that being said, thank you so much for all your support of the parade and the veterans. Accept this with pride. Thank you. [applause]
Thank you. That's a great lead into our business part of the meeting here. We have a presentation to start us off on economic development, and I'd like to invite Brian O., our Director of Community Development, and Nancy Sands, Senior Management Analyst, to help us out with this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, community. Brian O., Community Development Director, joined here tonight by Nancy Sands, our Senior Analyst with the Economic Development Department. Let's get this going. So we're here to provide a brief update on our work. This is one of the key council goals that we had a really robust discussion during the most recent goals and priorities setting. It's something that we look, it's the lens we use in much of our practice within community development, and we have room to grow, and so we're really grateful, once I can get this moving, to have this opportunity to give you an early preview as we head into the winter holidays with retail and spending top of mind. I think it's important for us to revisit some of the goals that we've set as part of the general plan update. And so earlier this year, we looked at a set of not just goals, but policies and programs with the focus on creating a robust, vibrant economy for all here in Petaluma. This is just a brief synopsis of that, everything from a strong economy, ensuring that the economy works for everyone, how is it equitable across our population here in Petaluma. We have to have a really robust conversation about financing and how things, how infrastructure and how our municipal services are paid for. We are also a vibrant destination. This is the place where we have a point of pride. We just heard about one of the many parades, one of the many ways that we get to showcase what Petaluma is about. And so that's something that we, you'll see throughout the theme of the general plan update and throughout the economic development work that we'll do as a city. And in closing, just how critical it is that we support our businesses, but also with the transportation. So we're hearing a lot about with the expansion of the 101, how that is starting to impact the way our regional economy functions here in town, as well as new businesses. So we have a number of businesses that we've supported throughout this year, and so we're really excited today to talk a little bit about those early successes. So how Petaluma can support economic development? I've mentioned this before, but it bears repeating, we can't do it all on our own. It's very much a three-legged stool. We have our city resources. We need to have a partnership, strong partnership with our property owners, our business owners, as well as developers. In order for us to have a robust and vibrant economy, it, all those pieces need to work. And so there's a few ways that we can contribute, where we lead in this area, where we have some of that control, and that's our land use and zoning. And so we've spent the better part, the general plan update, when we started in 2021 with the housing element, we are getting close. We're about a year away from updating our general plan, and we've kicked off with Planning Commission earlier in October, looking at our zoning code. And so this is a key way for us to provide the support, provide the leadership around economic development, is how we use our, better utilize our land that's within the city limits. That sets the foundation, and then what we do day in and day out is the permitting process. How do we get businesses through the permit process as quickly and diligently as possible? And so that's another key component. I mentioned financing and infrastructure. I got my start right in 2012 as an intern coming out of school, and I started to work for a redevelopment agency down in Southern California. Many of those tools that I thought we had as I sat out and graduated are no longer at the disposal of the state of California. And so redevelopment 2.0, what are those tools? What are those levers? Enhance infrastructure financing district, EIFD for short, tax increment financing. These are all things that we absolutely will need to really dig deep, really understand, really see the value and see how these financing tools can work for Petaluma. Another one that we're keeping an eye on at the state level is Prop 4, climate bond. There's incredible opportunity there as leaders in the state on all things carbon and carbon reduction, meeting our carbon goals. The state is also putting forth quite a bit of incentives and financing so that the city can accomplish its own goals with respect to climate. And what started our general plan process off and what we hear time and time again when we're talking to businesses, whether they're prospective or ones that we're looking to retain and grow, is housing. How do we keep and provide and create those opportunities for housing for the employees? And that's, you know, one key theme that comes up every time, even if we don't enter a conversation about housing, it comes part and parcel with economic development and economic sustainability. Coalition building and business partnerships. Petaluma, we have so much human capital, social capital. There are, you know, on any given topic, a number of businesses, a number of groups willing to come to the table. And so one of the key components of that is how do we build that coalition? How do we bring, you know, a really focused attention on downtown through the partnership of not just property owners, businesses that I mentioned, but also like our Downtown Association, our Chamber of Commerce, and all the resources that come with a strong business partnership. Emerging themes, the Amazon Prime effect, I think probably six months, myself personally not relying on Amazon, and that was a, that was a big shift, a big behavioral shift. But we're also seeing how that's impacting the consumer, we're also seeing how that's impacting our local businesses. And the ones that, you know, we're really seeing as being successful and really being creative is creating these new retail experiences. So your traditional brick and mortar, whether it's, you know, a financial transaction, a bank, et cetera, those we're seeing less of. The ones that we're starting to see, the new businesses, there's an experiential component to it. Art Play Cafe comes to mind, that's the re-tenanting of the former Roaring Donkey business on Kentucky, very experiential. There's a retail component, but there's also play-based component. And those are the, you know, when we are talking to new businesses, ones that are trying to expand their current offerings, that's the thing that keeps coming up. How do we make it interesting? How do we make it so that it's attractive for the current consumer? We also need to have a conversation, a really focused conversation on sales and transit occupancy tax. As we're starting, you know, it's something that we monitor through the budget process. It's something that we hear from our business owners, just about sales, how do we generate more foot traffic? How do we generate more commerce? And so that's a, that's a really critical component. It's something we're looking at, not just in the context of our economic development strategies, but also an overall budget strategy for the city. And the ones that are being successful, the ones that we are seeing open up shop, there's more flexibility with how we're permitting them. So an example is the Bank of America, former Bank of America building. It fortunately didn't stay empty for very long. We were able to work with the property owner there, work with the prospective business that wanted to come to town and bring those two together, Sports Society. We also had been working with Exchange Bank as they wanted to have a presence on the west side of the boulevard, and so we're getting close to getting that complete. But it's that level of creativity, it's that level of flexibility that's going to be important so that we have thriving, successful properties and businesses throughout the city. And so that points to how do we adaptively reuse our historic buildings? The Tyler Building is another example. It was historically retail, we're getting them through the process, new coffee shop, Sana Cafe, as one of three tenants, to get that building, that property to be viable. And so again, just another example of the creativity that the team has been having. And this is somewhat of a throwback. About a year ago, we had a presentation from the county of Sonoma around the Micos Program. So it's the micro enterprise home kitchen. And just last week, we got, we had our first two submit, and so two, your traditional single-family homes, woman-owned, just wanting to start up a business out of their home. And so we've made contact, we're really excited to see that type of flexibility happening, particularly in our residential neighborhoods, and it points to all the guiding principles that the council, the community has been pushing forward as part of the general plan update. I'm going to ask Nancy to tag team with me here. This is just, just a snippet of what we've been working on for the better part of this year in coordination between the Community Development Department as well as economic development. This is just, again, a small snapshot, but wanted to provide just an update on all the different projects. I'll probably jump in on the attraction, but I'm going to turn the Business Navigator program over to Nancy.
Sure. Hello, Mayor and Council. Really excited about the programs that we've been working on to build this year, and a lot of them are building on things that we've always done, but just giving a little bit more attention and structure to them. So we launched a pilot Business Navigator program at the beginning of the year and then officially launched it just a month or so ago. And this is really a service to help new businesses or existing businesses understand and work through the permit process. And our role, my role and the role of my colleagues in this program is to sit down with the business, really understand what they're doing, identify potential needs, ways to really get them through the process as quickly as possible, which often involves supporting more organizations, supporting more understanding of what, what they need to get through, as well as on our side, to prep our planning, building, fire, all of our departments that process those permits, this permit's coming through. Do you have any preliminary questions? Again, just to really support them through the process. And again, as Brian mentioned, we had some great success stories with Art Play Cafe, our Retail Cannabis Program, OMW, which is a new, a business that's new to Petaluma, but has an office in Novato. And that's an exciting opportunity where we were able to bring the deputy building official and the fire marshal over to look at a large manufacturing space and work with the, the owners and just identify what would be needed to bring more PG&E power in. It's those relationships that really make a difference. Some existing businesses that are going through the program right now or have been through the program, Elroy's Wild Goat, we were very creative in being able to address some fire prevention needs with Wild Goat and an expansion there, Copperfields, and Grand Central Cafe. Turn it over back to you.
And I'll mention just for Retail Cannabis, we have three licenses in town. Early December is the target date for our first one out the gate, and so we're grateful, we're really, really excited to have an early win there with respect to the Retail Cannabis Program, which was a priority of council. The other one, just worth mentioning, Chick-fil-A, we're looking at an early December opening there, and so working with our new business owner as well. And then Elroy's, despite what you may hear on social media and on the internet, again, we've had an open line of communication trying to get both the downtown location, they also recently acquired the property on Washington and Lakeville as a potential second location. At the moment, it's, it's essentially their office headquarters that they're operating the business out of, and then they have the already existing food truck there. But they're excited, they're wanting to, in earnest, heading into the end of this year, pick up the conversation, get a permit going so that they can expand and do some tenant improvements downtown at the old, the former Walnut Grill location. And so we will be holding their hands throughout that process. They have a new architect onboard, and so we're really excited for that. And so navigating our existing and new businesses, but also being attractive to new businesses. I mentioned earlier Retail 2.0, needing to look at retail differently, everything from big box to, you know, They have a new architect onboard, and so we're really excited for that. And so navigating our existing and new businesses, but also being attractive to new businesses. I mentioned earlier Retail 2.0, needing to look at retail differently, everything from Big Box to, you know, everything in between. And, you know, I think the former Kmart location is a prime example of that. We finally are to the point, they've broken ground, they've split that into three smaller businesses, three known businesses, three known entities. And so they are in the construction phase, and we'll get them through the process so we can get them open as soon as possible. But I think it points to a larger emerging need, and so we are actively working with our brokers that are reaching out on a number of different properties throughout town, as well as our large institutional developers, Basin Street being one of them, trying to rethink, you know, their footprint, the specific one is within the, on the north end of town, the Business Park. You know, as we're starting to see office space needs change and wane somewhat, you know, it is compelling us to look at our business parks a little differently. And so, you know, as new ideas emerge, we're working with the developers and the property owners on a number of projects. And then I touched on the retention. Every time we, it seems downtown, there's always some new business, some new exciting expansion, and so making sure that we're meeting the moment, we're, you know, picking up the phone and reaching out and being proactive. So that, I think our highest success rate has been the early intervention. So when we're able to get in front of a property owner or a business early, we're able to really work together to get through the process. And then finally, general plan implementation. As we start to think we're coming back to the council December of this year with our proposed land use map, you know, how do we ensure that the land use changes and the existing zoning codes match up, right? So we're going to have to make sure the zoning code lines up. And then a little bit later on this evening, we'll talk about one of the specific plans as part of general plan implementation. So this is, it's just a snapshot, and absolutely more to come. We talked about Grand Central, you know, providing the options, the flexibility in order for them to continue to be a thriving business in town. Getting the former Seed Bank permitted and open for events has been really exciting to be able to experience that space in this, in this new way. We talked about Art Play Cafe. The bottom left-hand corner is what we now know as a thriving and growing Water Street. If you click back even five years, six years, on that Google Street View, it is a completely different story. And so that was, that's one of the big wins coming out of the Central Petaluma specific plan, just to see that energy and, and growth come back to Water Street. It's, it's, you know, one of the top three places, I think, people are coming when they're bringing people from out of town. Then the, the other, the one in the middle is a gene company along Water Street and that had their grand opening. And so one of the new businesses there. And then I just mentioned with the ongoing discussions with the overlay as an opportunity to bring economic activity and housing downtown, you know, this is just a sliver of what's to come and what we'll continue to have conversations about. We're also getting ready to put out a survey of our downtown businesses to better understand their existing needs, you know, what they're seeing as potential pain points so that we can be responsive and support our local businesses. We do have an existing economic development strategy. It was done in 2010. Much of it has been accomplished, has been worked on, but it's also time for us to look at fresh data, right? And so working on, looking at the trends, just a snippet, where Petaluma's has roughly 15% of the jobs in the county. And as we start to get more data and understand that data, how do we expand on that? How do we become more robust? How do we be that attractive place that people want to expand their businesses, want to relocate? And also have that conversation about housing. And then economic development, our city team is going through a transition. And so we're being really diligent in resourcing it appropriately. We know this is a top concern, a top priority for the council, for the community. And so we really appreciate the time today. We're happy to answer any questions, but also look forward to more regular updates to this council and to the community on our economic development program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I know we've all expressed a priority for economic development and that we do a good job and help grow in the, with economic development, mainly because that's kind of the lifeblood of what happens in the city. You know, if we want to have the parks that are nice, we want to have all the other facilities, we need robust economic development, both retention and recruitment of new business. So I'm really happy that you are all looking into it. I'm going to ask the council if there aren't any questions. I'm sure there will be. But I'll note to the audience that if there's audience comment on the presentation tonight, during general public comment is the appropriate time for the public to weigh in on this presentation. Would anyone care to start? Any got a question? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm so excited for this new, moving forward for economic development. And my question is, a lot of your focus in your presentation was on the downtown area, which is awesome, and some of the business parks, but, and one large shopping center that's older. But I'm looking at my little neck of the woods on the east side, and there's an empty lot on Lakeville and Baywood. And I have reached out to the owners and the real estate office, and I know I brought it up during general plan. Are we helping that owner, property owner find, I was looking at it as a maker's market area because Heritage Salvage is looking to relocate. So are we reaching out to those property owners? And there's also a large shopping center, I think it's called, anyway, it's still Newer Luckys on, I was going to call it Lakehorn, but I don't think it's called Lakehorn, Gateway. Anyway, is it Gateway? Okay. Anyway, there's a large, there was a paint store, and it's a very large portion of that shopping center. Are we reaching out to those property owners and finding new businesses that can go in or split the space?
So, short answer, yes. It, it sort of depends. Most of the larger spaces have representation. So working with the, we are in constant communication with our local brokerages. So JLL, Keegan-Kopin, that represent and look, are wanting to re-tenant. And so I don't believe, I've specifically had a conversation about the, I think it's maybe a Sherwin-Williams.
Yes.
That's no longer there. But we do have active conversations with our brokers. And so when there's an opportunity, they're looking at it, they're, they're calling, you know, my cell phone and just asking questions. Again, we're trying to be nimble, we're trying to get quick responses. The other one you mentioned is the vacant lot. And so that's, as part of the general plan, we're looking at, we, you know, so they're one of the property owners that get the outreach, just with the conversations, the discussions we're having. And so we're looking forward to, you know, trying to make that space work for the community and work for any prospective business. You mentioned Heritage Salvage as one. I think we've looked at many options for Bug, and we'll continue to be supportive of him and his ventures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Councilmember trips?
Okay, you mentioned cannabis, we're getting one store maybe by December 1. So how's that processes going? And what about the other two? What, where are they in the process? How can, soon can we expect them to actually be on the ground?
So Soulful is, is one of the, is the second, I would say, closest. And so they have a building permit under review. They also, it's an active construction site, and so that's another component that they're contending with. But they, they do have an active, all three of our permits are approved for locations. And then our third location, also along McDowell, and speaking with the property owner or the business owner on Friday, we're probably a week away from them, from them submitting their building permit. And so if all things go well, and our first one is any indication, I would say, spring of next year, we'll have the other two up and running.
Councilmember Quinn.
So I had comments rather than questions.
Shoot.
So now's a good time.
Hammer.
Okay, thank you. So first, I just want to express my appreciation for the work that the city's doing to make this a priority. I'll echo the mayor's comment. So economic development is vital to our community. We need to do a better job of investing in our community, whether that's for parks, public safety, public works. There's no shortage of a need. And just for the public to, in, in order for us to make those investments, there's only a few ways that we can do that. We can either get grants, which are in short supply. We can develop new property with urban growth boundary. That's more difficult to do, and it's not really abundant these days. Or we can do that through economic development, and that is within the purview of our control. Earlier this summer, after the 2025 North Bay Journal Economic Outlook Conference, I met with the keynote speaker, a gentleman by the name of Zachary Kushel. He's the founding and managing partner for Marin Sonoma Impact Ventures. It's a, it's a venture capitalist firm that specializes in investing startups that are in the North Bay on the 101 corridor. So he knows, he knows economic, you know, economics in, in the North Bay. And when I asked him, what can Petaluma do to do a better job of building our, a resilient economy here? The number one thing that he talked about was just resolutely letting people know that we're open for business and, and, and removing the barriers when they come here and want to do business. So letting people know that we're open for business, I think, is, is critical. And that was resonated, that, that, sorry, that was echoed in a letter that was received by the city from the Chamber of Commerce this past summer as well, where they wrote to the city and they said, "We encourage the city to create a Business Friendly Now campaign. Add the slogan to the city's website, and add the slogan to your email signatures, and similar to Climate Ready 2030. And support the campaign to every decision that is made within the city." So I bring that up and I share that because I believe in it. And I really think that part, if we want to do a, if we want to be really good at economic development, we have to let people know that this is a priority. And I, and I just want to encourage the city to think about that. And then lastly, I would say, how do we measure if we're getting better, staying the same, or getting worse? So as we go down this path of trying to improve our economic development, I would love to find ways for us to measure it so that we could come back and, and say whether we've been successful or not. Thank you.
Councilmember DeCarly, anything to add in here?
Are we, are we partnering with any professionals to help develop the plan as, as consultants or?
Short answer, yes. I also think, you know, we want to leverage our existing staff. We have, you know, quite a bit of institutional knowledge here, just standing next to me. But also, I mentioned, alluded earlier, the, the data pooling. So there's some technical stuff that we're looking at, a consultant to come in and help us start to think through. And what I hope connects is, we've also, you know, I would say we've had consultants on as part of the general plan update, looking at a robust economic development framework. We're getting really close to releasing the draft general plan. It really does outline a strategy for economic development that has had the input of the council, that has had the input of professional consultants, as well as the community. And so I'm really looking forward to prioritizing, and I think that's what a consultant can help us think through. How do we prioritize this? Where is this, where are we going to make the most impact? Because we can't do everything all at once. And so, again, we're looking forward to that conversation in the next coming months.
Yeah, well, no, that's great, because I, I think it'd be helpful to, you know, have more people be a part of it that, you know, built their careers on it or really understand business and, and can, you know, maybe make suggestions that any of us haven't thought about. At what point can we expect to kind of see a more fully developed plan?
So that kind of goes back to the, you know, as we're trying to rethink, try to embed economic development within everything that we do, we can come back with a more fleshed-out plan. I truly think what we're getting ready to release as part of the general plan, it identifies a number of strategies, action items, policies that we want to work on. That's something we can share now. It's already, it's been public, we've talked about it. That should give the council and the community a sense of, you know, all the different tools in the toolbox, and then we can have a much more focused conversation, I think, something to the tune of every quarter, whether it's a presentation like this, releasing of a report, as we hit those milestones with a new plan, is totally doable.
Okay. Yeah, well, you know, I want to, I want to continue to see us push for business, like I've, I've said it before, you know, and I think it's, it's important, you know, to focus on, on what we've got now, either existing businesses or existing commercial stock, you know, industrial or manufacturing, whatever it is, and continue to go out and, and, you know, either recruit or sustain. You know, I want to continue to see staff work directly with businesses and actually hear from them, see where they've struggled, whether it be foot traffic or it's permits, you know, and, and, you know, if, if it's along the lines of something like permitting, you know, where can we cut back and where can we make it less stressful or easy or less of a financial impact to them? Or even just a time, sort of an impact. You know, so that's, in, in a way, I think it's, you know, maybe us helping them a little bit less government would be better in some ways, and, and letting businesses work on their own, so.
Thank you. I kind of want to concur with that, that effort to kind of clear those hurdles. I mean, I appreciated the work you've done with getting agency coordination with state agencies and with, you know, the ABCs and all, all that brokering thing that happens in small business, that you guys have been really helpful, you know, and more and more helpful on. And I think, I hope to see that all pay dividends. I'd love to see us have a metric-based decision, like, do we know how much activated retail we have now, what percentage of space is activated? And same with commercial and industrial, where we have a metric we can show achievement, and how much vacant space we have that is like underperforming? Because I think that's a component of our, our, our economic development. And I know we talked about Chick-fil-A, and I know they're saying And I know we talked about Chick-fil-A, and I know they're saying they're going to have $10 million of business in the next year. And and I think, yes, but what comes to Petaluma is maybe $100,000, you know, 10 and 10 million dollar business. So it's going to take a lot of effort to get us to the kind of millions of numbers. I mean, we're a $300 million operation. We go up 1%. We need $3 million. And how many Chick-fil-A's? So this effort you're doing is really important to sustaining just even what we we have and let alone catching us on our woeful infrastructure deficit. And I and and so I'm really glad we're focusing on the small in the downtown. But in in and of itself, no one is impactful. But change in the downtown brings an energy that floats all boats and rises our income. So we want the big and big business, but we can't neglect the small business at the same time. Councilmember Barnacle.
Thank you for the presentation. I agree with much of the things that have been said today. Couple other thoughts that I wanted to layer on is just maybe quarterly, an email of like how many permits were issued? How many permits were closed? I think within that, you know, it's kind of tough to to measure exactly the time. But it feels like the thing we can measure is our time that we spend on things. So the amount of time from when the first thing came in to when the permit was issued. And then we can't really take so much, you know, we we lose a little bit of a influence once the permit's been issued to, you know, see the project through. But that that initial time from, you know, when it's submitted to when it's approved is something that I'd be very interested in sort of seeing that when we think about what our benchmarks are and what our metrics are and and things like that. The other thing, ribbon cuttings. I think the the Amy's ribbon cutting was a great example of like how to celebrate a new business coming into town. But I think it'd be great if we could, you know, if we offered that to a lot of different businesses and whatnot, not just the ones in downtown, the ones that are all over town, to just really continue to show love on our social media channels and things like that. I think I would recommend looking at some of the things that SF's doing right now. I just sent the mayor a video today of the mayor of San Francisco, and they've got just basically a simple form for saying, I'm going to be putting outdoor seating here. And they put the guidelines, and there's no permit that's required. It's just if you're in violation of the guidelines, we're going to come tell you, you need to take your tables away. But it's like, you know, we want to take the hassle away and the guesswork away. And just you let us know that you're going to do this, and if you're in violation, you'll find out. But like, here's the guidelines, don't screw it up type of thing. And I just think that in general, Mayor Lurie is doing a pretty good job of turning San Francisco around and making it more of a business friendly environment. And then the final thing is really agree with Councilmember Quinn on sort of making ourselves open for business. If there's like, we've got a major projects page on our website for big development projects. Maybe there's like a major vacancies page or something, you know, or it's like, how many vacancies are in this business park and business owners can list those and on our economic development page. We can so, you know, here's open bit open buildings, maybe there's vacant lots that are, like I'm thinking over by Kaiser, there's a couple of like big vacant lots that someone, if they want had a specialty facility for manufacturing, might be able to, maybe the brokerage is already doing this, but I just, there's just some of my ideas. But thank you again.
Councilmember Kate Thompson.
Just going to go quick because this was actually part of my public or my council comment. But I did read the article about San Francisco, and I appreciate that Councilmember Brian Barnacle brought that up because the mayor of San Francisco is really moving things, and he's moving quickly. And that's what I'd like to see here. But I just want to give kudos on March 8th from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Deer Creek Shopping Center. Image Studios is opening. And so I weirdly just met this woman. And then there was a problem with the permit, so I just sent her email to, you know, city staff, city manager, and never heard back from him, which was great. And so that means that whatever the issue was with the permit, whether it was county or city, was taken care of. And so it's really nice to see how quickly that happened. And that was a pretty short period of time. And so I hope people go there on and, you know, check out their new business. But this is great, and I really do appreciate what the mayor of San Francisco is doing, you know, to lure business back into San Francisco and because it's a great city. And as is Petaluma, it's 45 minutes away. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember DeCarly.
Just one more thing to actually kind of expand off of what you said. It would be, I think it'd be very helpful if we had a kind of a baseline of who the real economic drivers in town are, you know, breakdown of the different businesses and types and, you know, which ones struggle, which ones don't. Something to kind of, I I think that would be helpful anyway in in kind of establishing like this is maybe a direction that we could go or support or help or not.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, just I have the comments, but I was saving them for the end. The Business Navigator Program is an excellent, and the survey to the downtown businesses would be excellent. And are we going to get those questions ahead of time or at least the results of the survey? And are we also checking in with the property owners? Because there's a lot of properties that are empty and how we can help maybe them or what they they have. You know, they show their properties to, you know, future tenants possibly. And we would like to know ahead of time, who's looking at those properties? I mean, we were Cattlemen's was even looking at some properties, but they decided they didn't want to invest. So that you don't have to answer it tonight. Just I would like to see, and I'm sure the rest of the council would like to see this survey and how it goes. There's also applications that have been in the queue for a long time, and the businesses are getting off the ground, but they might be three to four years. And one of them is very large on Kentucky Street and recently spoke to me about his trees in front of his building and how it's blocking a sign, and he doesn't know if they're his responsibility or the city's responsibility. And then also sidewalks are always a a big question mark and who's responsible downtown. And also, there's a new nonprofit that wants to beautify Petaluma. That's the name of their nonprofit, and they want to brighten up Kentucky Street with twinkly lights, solar lights in the trees and lamp posts with beautiful flowers hanging on them. They're a very ambitious group of ladies, so we can't ignore them. But hopefully, we'll reach out to those nonprofits and help them because they're connecting with the property owners and the businesses. Missing retail, I'm going to say it again, we're missing appliance stores. We need one like four years ago because I think I've replaced all my appliances in the last four years. So if we could just reach out to, I don't know, I know our economic development director was doing that, and I was talking to her a lot about that. Also, I'd like to see a celebration of those legacy businesses in Petaluma. We can't afford to do something formal, but let's celebrate. This restaurant's 100 years old, even this bar downtown is 100 years old. This, you know, this establishment has made a 50 year milestone in being a business in Petaluma. I would like to celebrate those and publish it in the paper and give them some publicity because they might be just getting so exhausted that they're ready to stop doing business. And we would hate to lose some of those legacy businesses in Petaluma. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Shribbs.
Yeah, just to add to that comments here, I just went through the business park on South McDowell Extension, and I was looking at the names of some of the businesses. And there's a huge number of science based businesses down in that area, which has been expanding since some of the new buildings came in. And so that's a whole nother area I think that we could support better. We do have enough spaces in industrial parks now. And if it's science based businesses that are growing and thriving right now already, multiplying that would be helpful. The other area I'd like to just make comment on is the in the retention area. So really important that we get to at that point because sometimes it's the negative things that happen that that hurt a lot. So like, we've lost some antique stores. And so as that is declining, so understanding why the businesses are not doing well, helping those that are on the edge move forward in some way. And 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 so we know either it's the location or it's the economic environment. What it is about certain things, like we've had like restaurants in come in and out of the same places at least six times. It's a couple of places I've seen here. We've had six different restaurants over the 30 years I've been here. So why are these restaurants not surviving? There's a reason. Can we investigate that and find out, okay, so that the next time, maybe there shouldn't be a restaurant, there should be something else? So if there's other way, things that we can do to investigate why businesses are failing as well as helping those that are struggling. And then if we could know the problem, maybe we can then solve it and and figure out a way, a pattern to reverse that pattern. So I look forward to always all the positive things we could do to promote and do things. But we also have to learn our lessons too and also make those public. So we always, okay, let's let's make sure we the good and the bad, we understand on that. And that will also help in the development moving forward. Anyway, those are just comments to add to that.
Thank you. And I think we all understand how businesses come and go. And and we've lost several to closures of business supplies and things. And we get those warn notices that a big business is leaving. And so it's always fun to get a notice that a big business is coming back in. And I see, you know, up near Enphase on the north McDowell, and there's a new major tenant coming into those office spaces. So hopefully, that's the trend. Hopefully, we've turned an economic turn, and part of it's due to your efforts. So keep up those efforts. Thank you very much. Great presentation tonight. Please stick around in case anyone from the general public comment also wants to add a comment to that period. Thank you. And as as I mentioned, that brings us to our general public comment. And during general public comment, the public's invited to speak and make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes per person. And depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares, totaling no more than 20 minutes. If we have more than 20 people speaking, we will put the additional comments at the last of our agenda. We'll bring it in at at the end. And with that, I'd like to ask our clerk to read our message and start our 30 second clock.
Yes, we did receive six general public comments, which are posted online. And at this time, I will start a 30 second clock. And during these 30 seconds, members of the public are invited to bring their speaker cards to my desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
And I'll note, we have been somewhat lax about watching that clock, but we will be watching the clock carefully and and not bringing in additional speakers after the end of the 30 seconds. And so we now have our list for the evening. And our first speaker would be Christopher Brown, to be followed by Catherine Babowski.
Did we want to set the clock at?
And oh, sorry. Good point. Thanks for catching me on that. We have 16 comments requests tonight. And so that would put us at one minute each for for the comments tonight. Thank you.
...to bring back to my home.
Thank you. The minute the minute goes very fast. I apologize. And if you have comments in writing, we can catch them and put them into the record for the evening. Thank you much. Catherine Babowski is our next speaker, to be followed by Merlene Cruz.
Yes, my name is Christopher Roski. I live at Lubbock, Illinois. Mark also, this harmony is breaking all the laws there. And also, too, you need to bring, you need to have penal transit run on weekends on Lakeville Highway. Because a lot of people can't make it all the way, walk up from Lakeville Highway all the way to Baywood, McDowell, and take and wait for a bus there and have to transfer to 11 at Safeway to get downtown. Then have to walk all the way back, another half hour walk to from McDowell and Baywood. That's too much walk. That's that's too far to walk. And you need to have them run on Veterans Day. And like I said, this manager is where I live at, she's her family's breaking all the laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Merlene Cruz, to be followed by Chris Parker.
Thank you for this opportunity. I wasn't expecting. I live in Youngstown Mobile Home Park, and I moved there in 2010, transplanted out of Oakland, California to what I thought was going to be my senior life. I am still working at 76 years of age in a hotel during the night shift. I do this to meet make ends meet. And the way that you are aware, we're being treated, I'd like to thank the people behind me. These people that you see at every meeting, you see them everywhere. They're the ones that have put their lives on hold to defend the rest of us. And please, please, please take their pleas seriously. We are scrambling for our livelihood. I don't want to buy a man to live in, not at my age. So thank you for what you've done, but please understand these people are my heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Parker, to be followed by Marie Cuneo.
Good evening. My name is Chris Parker. I'm a resident at Youngstown Mobile Home Parks. Just like to say first off that I appreciate very much the the efforts and the fantastic support that we've had from the city council and city staff in the struggles that we've had in the past four years. My rent statement for this November has gone up by an amount that's three times more than what I've been paying for the past seven years. This is because Three Pillars Community has decided to take a payment that they were awarded. They reneged on a payment plan and now demand all of their money upfront. I'm looking at, if I can't pay this, I'm looking at eviction. This amounts to this amounts to extortion by way of threatening eviction. Thank you for your support.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Marie Cuneo, to be followed by Jody Johnson.
Hello. Thank you so much. Thank you, council and mayor and city staff for all of your support. I am also a resident at Youngstown Mobile Home Park. And I just wanted to let you know that I haven't quite figured out how I'm going to make that $1,969.48 payment, but I will. I don't want to leave Petaluma, but I just wanted you to know that it's a little black cloud over our holidays this year. And I received four letters in as many days from our management. And I have mental disability, and it is very stressful. So thank you very much for your support and your enforcement.
Thank you. Jody Johnson, to be followed by Janice Barker.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city staff and community. Tonight, we stand as residents who are suffering abuse and disregard for our welfare. Youngstown senior residents are suffering from a surprise $1,969. In essence, they are asking the judge to rule that it is okay for them to do completely opposite of the senior park overlay zoning ordinance and okay for them to fraudulently underhousing to tell an all-age residence that this is an all-age park. Senior citizens who own their mobile homes are suffering. Then seniors get a very intimidating letter from Youngstown Park owner's attorney about filing out, filling out a city survey. Littlewoods, after receiving the third arbitration decision of a zero award, found themselves in an appeal hearing on October 31st. It's incredible that the park owners are seeking in the appeal, an entirely different appeal and a different arbitrator, as if to say that you don't like a court decision, you can have a do-over.
Thank you. Lorraine Grunberger, to be followed by Jennifer Boyle.
Hi. Littlewoods were hit with a notice that we're going to change, charge them extra because of contaminated dumpster, but the residents, over the majority, saw no proof of this and filed a petition that wanted, they wanted personal trash cans, which would be more than half the amount of the charges they're being charged now. Park owners noticed residents on Friday, noticed residents on Friday that they would not allow personal service, and residents will fight that. In addition, on November's statement is a pass-through for the contamination, and this is not allowed under the rent stabilization. Capri, in the meantime, with overcharges and pass-throughs are not, have not been corrected, and the closure process notice to their mailbox is on Saturday. So they received a notice. Now that the park owners have jumped on the bandwagon with...
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Jennifer Boyle, to be followed by Tim Portius.
Hi, everybody. I'm on the wagon. I'm not finding that. I'm sorry, I'm not finding it. Okay, thank you. Now that the park owners have jumped on the wagon with disgruntled Petaluma residents who do not live in a mobile home park to push their agenda that way, they do not use factual information, but the same behind-the-scenes approach the park owners always use to get ordinances reversed or settled laws removed. The problem with their method is that they view one or two advocates as a decision-makers for all these mobile home residents fighting back and saying no. Never would mobile home park residents in Youngstown, Capri, or Littlewoods meet with a park owner to give up revisions they fought till midnight on August 4th, and was, and that was unanimously voted in, or allow vacancy control.
Thank you very much. Tim Portius, to be followed by Tom Bornheimer.
Hello, folks. Vacancy control in effect since 1994 to be removed for them to make land amounts unaffordable for any senior or vulnerable residents. They tried those backdoor demands over 2.5 years now and were denied, and courts of law and arbitrators are finding fault with those same park owners' assertions. Why would residents give up more protection under the premise that they would stop harassing us? Any bully or extortionist for that part would always try to make a resident submit using any means. When the means like courts and arbitrators don't work, they go to a person behind the scenes to do their bidding. The pitch that ground rent increase would not happen until a resident moved out defeats the purpose of rent stabilization ordinances in the first place. We remind all that the August 4 revision, park owners...
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Tom Bornheimer, to be followed by Donna Brady.
Hi. I wanted to talk about something that's not on the agenda, has to do with finances and probably some opportunities as well. So you talked about some of that tonight with the economic development. So inventory of empty spaces is a great idea. You don't know what's missing until you go out and look. M Group did a drive-by to find the overlay spots, do the same drive-by and look at all the empty spots and figure out where they are. That way, when you have somebody who needs to leave their space, you can say, hey, we have a list of 100 that you can choose from. Expenses besides revenues and the EKN Hotel, if the city is so hard up for money, and they're putting all their chips into that one hotel, that's not good. So if you're looking for revenues, you should also look at expenses and look at all the costs that are going out, making sure that all that should be going out that way. You know, you talk about new shops, Brian, you could have a heat pump shop with Sonoma Clean Power, maybe open one downtown. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, any comments you want to submit in writing will be read by all of council. Donna Brady, to be followed by Jorge Arango.
Hi. I live in Youngstown. Council members, I'm one of the residents from Capri Villa Mobile Home Park here in Petaluma. First, I just wanted to say thank you for your support and patience. We at Capri, we received a letter this past Saturday notifying us that the owners are asking for the closure of Capri Villa. As you can imagine, this is, these type of actions can be stressful for all the residents, as many of the residents are on a fixed income and some are on disability. Many of the residents feel that the closure is retaliation for the ordinances that you guys passed on August 4th of this year. My question for the owners would be, why would they keep buying mobile home parks if there is no return profit in their investment? They bought Littlewoods, they bought in Cotati, they bought Capri, they bought Evergreen in Windsor, and they bought Carriage Court in Santa Rosa. If a business is not making a profit, I don't understand why keep investing in the same business over and over and over. Also, instead of closing the parks, they can always sell them. I don't understand why of the closing of the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Rakuzin, to be followed by Rudy Maglenti.
Thank you. On the economic development front, love to hear about the trend toward deregulation. As being a part of the couple of the permit examples shown that were permit nightmares until they were facilitated, but largely due to political pressure from them knowing someone in council or in city government. I think council member Kater Thompson had a similar story of a business owner reaching out. She applied a little pressure to the community development, and it got done. It's great to hear that that will become the norm, not the exception if you know someone within the city. So love hearing that direction for permit processing. Also, with permits, we need to really look at providing completed copies of example permits to business owners, because that's an easy idea to let people have templates, do a much easier compliance process, also AI modules to allow people to facilitate, train it on our code, train it on successful permits. You have suddenly an ability for people to ask their own questions. Also, I think we need to apply the same regulatory lens potentially to the blueprint for climate action, and I had some examples, but I'm out of time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to submit in writing. And Rudy Maglenti, to be followed by John Hanania.
Good evening, council members. I'm speaking in behalf of Angela. My grandma, Lucy Campanelli, almost 90 years old, has lived in Youngstown since 1979. The grief, the stress, and insecurity these park owners have caused for all the residents have threatened their health and well-being. My grandmother is suffering from anxiety attacks causing her pain out and fail. She is terrified of losing her home, not being able to pay the rent increases, or the park owners closing the park, evicting everyone. Every day brings a new threat from those people, and I don't know how long my grandmother will live this day. Sincerely, Angela.
Thank you very much. John Hanania is our last speaker tonight.
Good evening. First, Kevin, it would be really nice during agenda item, if you can announce about the last speaker, and if anybody else wished to speak about the item, so we don't have what happened last time to happen. It's a general public comment, I understand you have to turn your paper within 30 seconds. Well, tonight, Karen, you're it. Relax, there's no daggers, there's no darts. Last year, you did a good job, so I'm going to leave it in your lap with something that bothers me tremendously. I don't know of any of you drive on Washington, the flags are ripped again. So we have a Veteran Day coming, so I really appreciate if we can have new flags or if we can take them down, because I know the city manager doesn't want me to go up there and change them. And the last thing, condolences to you, Peggy, for your loss of your father. Good night.
Thank you very much. Before we close, general public comment, I'd like to invite staff, and by staff, I'm Nina Jenna Garcia of our Economic Development Team, no, no.
Community Development, yes.
Community Development, one of those developments, we're working on it here.
Yes.
So to comment on a few things we've heard tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. Jenna Garcia, Assistant Director of Community Development. I just wanted to share some resources for anybody in the audience and anyone tuning in that is facing possible loss of housing as a result of being unable to make a rent payment. There are resources available to you. The city is providing funding to COTS here in Petaluma specifically to provide financial assistance to folks that are at risk of potential homelessness or losing their housing. So if you want to reach out to, I'm going to say it a couple of times, the email address here at the city is housing@cityofpetaluma.org. We'll make sure to connect you with the right person at COTS. Again, that's housing@cityofpetaluma.org, and I will hang out right outside here for anybody that wants to chat. Thanks. Thank you.
Can I ask one question there? And isn't it also that COTS is bringing matching or complementary, not just, I mean, we recognize the need in the community, and we're trying to bring many people together to help with the solution efforts? Is that pretty correct?
That is correct. Yeah, thank you, mayor. So the city is providing $25,000 this year for this financial assistance program, and COTS has offered to match that with another $25,000. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for jumping up, helping us. And with that, we're...
Just two more things. I'll have the city attorney weigh in, and then I just want to let Mr. Hanania and our council know that those flags are going to be replaced. So we just got them up in the office.
Council member now is amazing to get that done already.
I know. So fast. Really good.
Yeah, really good. Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of updates in response to some of the comments tonight from our mobile home community members. First, we have prepared a letter to the community members that received Mr. Beard's letter about, that seemed intended to discourage them from answering the questionnaire that we sent out, that is a requirement of maintaining our senior overlay. So that's just, that's done already in English, it's been translated into Spanish, and it will go out this week. But while that's happening, people should know that that's the purpose of the questionnaire. It's been, age verification has been a requirement since the senior overlay has been in effect. So that's what we're implementing, and just because our community members help us maintain the senior park status by completing the questionnaires, doesn't mean that we're going to stop protecting their information that we can protect as private information, even though Mr. Beard seemed to imply otherwise. So keep a lookout for that. If you have questions about that, please feel free to contact our housing team or us. Housing@cityofpetaluma.org and cityattorney@cityofpetaluma.org. The other thing I want to mention is that when our community members feel that they've received notices from, say, park owners that they believe are in non-compliance with our regulations, should, the best thing you can do is send us a copy of that notice. That's something you're free to do legally. It is not, that violates no obligations you owe to the park owners, and we can receive communications like that in confidence. We're going to be working on making that easier for residents with a form that you can get on our website to help you do that, and can provide some reassurance as to how it is that we can receive information you want to share in confidence, in confidence. But that's very helpful for us, because we're able to assess and provide responses like through our website and otherwise, as to things that are legitimate and lawful, charges and things that are not. So that's a way you can help us, and that's probably an easier way than, it's easier for us to act on that than on the oral summaries and public comment. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for helping out with that, and that closes general public comment for the evening. And the next item we have is council comment, where we take a minute to talk about where our council liaison responsibilities or other appointments are, and I'd like to start it off from this end tonight with council memberships.
Okay, so just hopefully a shorter, short list. Not a whole lot of new information, but just like what I've been up to. I've done a whole lot of volunteer work for Petaluma Wetlands Alliance and Relief, planted a bunch of trees, pulled a bunch of weeds, put in some owl box, some swallow boxes over there at Ellis Creek, so that work got done. There was lots of meetings. However, there's no new information, there's pretty much similar information that we've heard, so there's nothing new to report on that. That was North Bay Watershed Association, Ag and Open Space, and there was a cities. The one thing from the city council members and mayors meeting, which was a dinner and a meeting, one of the things that came up in the talks was about the county. There was a county services person that gave the talk, and they said that we're going to be losing tens, maybe up to $100 million at the county level for health services and for, to be watching out, that we're going to have to kind of figure out something, and we are going to be more unified in all the cities and be integrated to figure out how we're going to solve this issue, because the federal government's reducing huge amounts of money at the county level, possibly starting up in January. So we have to try to figure out what to do about that. The other thing that was mentioned again, again, I mentioned last time about health insurance increases, again, that was mentioned by this person, that health insurance is expected to increase dramatically in all sorts of ways. So to watch out for that and be more prepared. Other meetings was SFEI did an update on cement project, but nothing really new happening there, they're still in progress. I've been attending the police academy, and it's a 10-week course, including a full day Saturday, so I recommend to anybody interested to see what the actual police, it's very intense and very complicated, really learn all the things that the police force does, which is a lot more than I knew. There's been, there's also webinars I attended, both on, from the Climate Center, I Know Before You Grow, California Insurance, the state level gave out webinars, I've been attending those. But again, pretty much, things were already...
was lots of meetings. However, there's no new information. There's pretty much similar information that we've heard, so there's nothing new to report on that. That was North Bay Watershed Association, Ag and Open Space, and there was a cities. The one thing from the city council members and mayors meeting, which was a dinner and a meeting, one of the things that came up in the talks was about the county. There was a county services person that gave the talk, and they said that we're going to be losing tens, maybe up to $100 million at the county level for health services and for, to be watching out that we're going to have to kind of figure out something, and we are going to be more unified in all the cities and be integrated to have, to figure out how we're going to solve this issue, because the federal government's reducing huge amounts of money at the county level, possibly starting up in January. So we have to try to figure out what to do about that. The other thing that was mentioned again, again, I mentioned last time about health insurance increases. Again, that was mentioned by this person, that health insurance is expected to increase dramatically in all sorts of ways. So to watch out for that and be more prepared. Other meetings was SFEI did an update on sediment project, but nothing really new happening there. They're still in progress. I've been attending the police academy, and it's a 10-week course, including a full day Saturday. So I recommend to anybody interested to see what the actual police, it's very intense and very complicated, really learn all the things that the police force does, which is a lot more than I knew. There has been, there's also webinars I attended, both on, from the Climate Center, I Know Before You Grow, California Insurance, the state level gave out webinars. I've been attending those. But again, pretty much, things we already know. And the one interesting place where I went was the Northern California Media Center. It's a brand-new center, who's a grand opening up there in Roanoke Park, covers a larger area of more than Roanoke Park. It's radio and TV, essentially our Petaluma Community Access Channel on steroids. We're talking about multiple studios for both movie and radio. They've got 40 to 50 employees versus our handful in PCA running, and they've got multiple volunteers who are present at there and was supported by the rancheria also, provided them the extra money they needed to get through with all the other monies that they had to build this new building that they have. So it's a wonderful facility to look at, and so, anyway, I'm recommending PCA kind of look at that model, says, hey, maybe we can step up a little bit, work with them as partners. Anyway, that's my report of what I've done the last few weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Quint.
Thank you. No liaison report, report outs. I do want to thank Ms. Bobowski for bringing up the transit service on the weekends. I just wanted to ask the city manager if you could maybe talk to Jared or the team to see what we could do, because just looking at the map, it, I think on the weekends, there's a gap there that we should, we should see if we can close, close out. And since you brought it up, John, I'll be on KCPA or KPCA Thursday at 5:00 on the riffing with Joss and Nate show. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarly.
So John sort of mentioned it, but at Ag and Open Space, we had an expert panel of people in agriculture, from farmers to people in real estate and people that help anywhere in between. And they talked about some of the struggles that they go through and how Ag and Open Spaces helped them, you know, and in some cases, giving them enough of a buffer to get, keep things going a little bit longer to where they're more stable. At the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Association meeting, we had a, I forget the title exactly, but a gentleman from the county speaking about, you know, homeless services, housing, transportation-type stuff. And, you know, he was pretty blunt with how a lot of funding is drying up for things. And so it's, it's likely that sooner than later, you know, a lot of things will be drying up and going away, just because the money won't be there. And then at the Water Advisory Committee, which is for the Sonoma County Water Agency, we received a budget presentation for fiscal year '24, '25. It, it did say that, you know, for the last year, the county as a whole has, from what they budgeted, saved about 770 million gallons, which is, is it, it's a lot of, it's a lot of water. But it's, you know, compared to the whole, it's, it's a lot less, but 770 million is a lot of water to save. You know, they also said too, that as far as what they budgeted for themselves over the year, they were able to come in $32 million under that. And so, you know, that's kind of on the heels of when we had a rate increase, you know, so hopefully, you know, hopefully next year, they won't come back with one, hopefully two, you know, they'll have enough for the improvements that they need to make to infrastructure to keep our water supply intact and going. And we also talked about, you know, up in Lake Mendocino, they've, they've adopted a new weather system called FIERO. It's an acronym for it, and that's going to help maximize water storage within the lake. And, you know, this, this is going to replace the older method of more or less guesstimating, using charts and graphs and, and, you know, this, this will give much, much more storage, you know, at times when we need it, when there's drought or with what's coming with Potter Valley, if that happens. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it for all my updates. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnicle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to flag that we're dealing, in addition to the healthcare costs, there's a pretty big food insecurity issue that's really going across the whole country. But it's, I encourage everybody, if you can, for those of us who have the means, to look at Redwood Empire Food Bank. I know Sunscreen Power is adding a $28,000 donation on top of the, our year-round giving, but they're going to be running ads as well, trying to encourage people to, to be giving to the food bank. We're seeing like, you know, 2X the number of traffic on the website, 2X the number of people getting referrals, things like that. And so let's all take care of each other during this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kater Thompson.
Thank you. I too am looking forward to hearing what we're going to do with the transit gap, because that definitely is an issue. I was at the Petaluma Community Center, and there was a discussion on Alzheimer's and just all the different medications that are available. And it was actually a great conversation, and there were more people there than signed up. It was packed. And so that was great to see so many people educating ourselves on possibility of, you know, Alzheimer's and other dementia. I want to say lots of roads are getting slurry sealed in all the districts, and I'm really happy about that. I talked about the economic development with the new business opening at Deer Creek. But I do want to say, small businesses are hurting. People that do tile work. Somebody called me, who's been in the tile business in Petaluma for 40 years, and they really don't have any business. And this is what's happening with all home repairs. And so when we're talking about, you know, bringing businesses in, really what's happening to the federal government is hurting businesses, and it's hurting everybody. I think that, you know, hopefully, things will turn around, and we're going to go back to some stability, but it's going to be a while. So it's disheartening when you're hearing from people you know, I'm talking about local businesses, and they don't have like a name in front of them, because they're either at home businesses or they have a shop somewhere. I was, as far as like Sonoma County, SCTCA, Sonoma County Transportation Climate Action, along with TAM, the Marin Transportation Authority of Marin, we did send a joint letter to Caltrans talking about requesting that there's actually some changes in the hours of the commute. Hearing a lot of complaints and reading about them, and we're quite aware of it, and a lot of people also sit in that traffic. As far as my water committee, the GSA, there, we're going to be having a field trip over to Ellis Creek with one of the monitoring wells, and that's to see seawater intrusion. So that's exciting that we're moving forward with, with our goal of, of water stability for Petaluma. And Petaluma's water basin is actually in really good shape. Smart, there's no update, because I have a meeting next week, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
And thank you. One of the speakers, or a few of them, at Little Woods, were talking about Recology, and I was hoping maybe the city could reconnect, because I know that Recology has had numerous educational conversations with the tenants, and the dumpsters used to be in the back, but now they're in the front, and there's been a lot of illegal dumping in the City of Petaluma. So maybe we can just reconnect with Recology. Recology is also on my, my council report. In October, I had the chance to visit two Petaluma High School Leadership and Government classes. These students blew me away. They are curious, engaged, and full of great questions on how our city runs. If these young people are our future, then Petaluma is in very good hands. At our recent Public Safety Committee meeting, we learned about the police department's use of drones and automatic, automated license plate readers, or ALPRs, as the cool kids in public safety call them. Fun fact, Petaluma has been using ALPR technology since 2005 to help parking enforcement. So it's not a new, it's not as new as it sounds. Our next meeting will be in January 2026, when the Petaluma Police Department staff will circle back with the answers to the thoughtful public comments we received at the meeting. Big thanks to Chief Miller and the team for their openness and hard work. On October 23, exactly 8:30 a.m., I joined the mayor and Councilmember DeCarly at the Petaluma Fire Department's Flag Ceremony, honoring firefighter James Mott, who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty 113 years ago. It was a moving reminder of the courage and dedication behind our public safety family. As vice mayor, I also had the honor of representing the city at two events last week, including the 22nd Annual Best Practices Awards Breakfast at SCO. I got to present the Employee Initiative Award to a 2005 graduate of College to Career Program, a wonderful collaboration between the Department of Rehabilitation and the Santa Rosa Junior College. It's always inspiring to see these partnerships that can help people reach their goals and thrive in the workplace. And now, my public service announcement, as we head into the holidays, please remember to compost those old pumpkins. Or if they don't have writing or paint, you can find farmers who need them for their livestock. They've had their moment, and now those pumpkins need to have their time to shine in the green bin. All those thin, flexible plastic packaging materials go in the gray landfill bin, not recycling, no matter what the label claims. So if it says compost, it's not going to work. Wrapping paper, yes, unless it sparkles or shines, let's not put it in the recycling container, the blue one. The street sweeping, we can't forget that our streets are full of leaves right now, and then we need to help out by maybe moving our own cars when it's our turn to have our streets swept. So check the website for your scheduled day. It helps keep our streets and our creeks clean and beautiful. And for more information, visit recology.com/petaluma, because nothing says holiday cheer like sorting your recycling correctly. And this was in the mailbox. So look for it, because it's got great information. Don't recycle it. Keep it around for your whole family. On a sad note, a radio personality in Philadelphia from Petaluma, Pierre Roberts, passed away last week. And as the council members were talking about our own local community radio station, we had Pierre's personality begin in Petaluma, and he's been in Philadelphia for the last maybe five, six decades, and he's quite a personality, but he was raised in Petaluma. So there's a great place in heaven for DJs.
Well, thank you very much, and a great report. So in my personal activities, I'm on the Library Advisory Board, and we met recently in the newly refurbished libraries, the first meeting of the Library Advisory Board back. They're so impressed and so happy that it's back open. And there's been a weekend full of Dia de los Muertos events in town. So Petaluma has many, many events that take up the downtown space. And with the Saturday Night Event closing Kentucky Street from B Street to Western, it was, it's quite a, quite a street event there. More sobering, I'm on the County Homeless Coalition, and they've met constantly, like weekly now, and it's the director of the Health Services Agency, Nolan Sullivan, who went to the mayor's meeting, and is, and is doing kind of a road show, trying to impress each of the cities and each of the council persons and you, the public, about how severe the cuts are that are coming. And we, we see it in the SNAP programs and the, and the appeals from Redwood Empire, but we, we also see it in, in what we thought was safe, permanent supportive housing. Once you're through homelessness and into a stabilized, even that is under attack, and, and being underfunded, and projects that we have right here in Petaluma. The, there is a subset of this homeless coalition called the Electeds. It, it's, there's a lot of nonprofits on it. There's a lot of electeds on this bigger board, and the, the electeds are getting together to see what impact we can have independently. But in the nonprofit world, I would expect efficiency efforts, which might look like consolidation efforts. It might be that there is not enough for every nonprofit to continue, and they might be looking at consolidations between them. And so that, that's quite a bit of what's going on. I think I'd like to also congratulate our council member, Brian Barnicle, who was elected, an abundant elected fellowship from the abundant, the abundance, that was network, and that's a community of, of people believing in a better way to get us into the future, and results are in governance, it removes barriers, modernizes systems, and delivers tangible outcomes for communities. It sounds like everything else we've been talking about tonight, doesn't it? A big shout out to the Petaluma's Rebuilding Together, who received the honor of being awarded National Excellence in Leadership Prize by the National Rebuilding Organization. And, you know, so lots of good news in Petaluma. I just want to close with a note to the mobile home park residents, that council support is unwavering, and we are continuing to put the resources to this that we have in need. So that concludes, and I'd like to pass it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, community, just two items tonight. We are excited to welcome back our pool patrons for reopening of the Swim Center on Wednesday, November 12th, beginning at 5:30 a.m. for lap swim. The city's new aquatics program will include extended hours on both weekdays and weekends, online pass purchases for easy check-in, and discounted passes with multiple swims. This past week, staff have been painting the locker rooms, repairing fixtures, improving signage, training new lifeguards, and preparing the swim deck for next week's reopening. Anyone interested in receiving updates on the pool is encouraged to sign up at cityofpetaluma/swimcenter. And then, tis the season. Tomorrow, our city self-service sandbags stations will be open at two locations, at Hopper Street and at Prince Park. We've got a storm coming between Tuesday and Wednesday with potential for king tides, so that always creates some localized flooding. So really encourage you to be prepared. Our sandbag locations and other helpful storm information can be found at cityofpetaluma.org/floodalertinfo. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar for the evening, and thank you all for attending. And I'd like to look up and down the dais and see if anyone wishes to remove an item from this. Seeing no requests for removal, I will ask if anyone has any questions of staff before we move to public comment on this. And not seeing any questions, so I'd like to open public comment and invite the clerk to read the message.
We did not receive any public comments on the consent calendar, but if anyone would like to speak, this is the moment to bring your card to my desk. Doesn't look like we have any takers.
No, I'm not seeing anyone rushing forward. There, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to council for a motion for the consent calendar.
Make the motion.
We have a motion from Kater Thompson and a second from now.
I'll second it.
And may we have a roll call vote, please?
Barnicle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And that moves us to our next item, which is the workshop. It's a recommendation to receive staff presentation and discuss a staff facilitated Community Outreach Partners Model to Enhance Engagement and Feedback in Support of the Petaluma North Smart Station Priority Development Area Specific Plan Project. And to help us with this, we have Brian O., our Director of Community Development, and Andrew Triple, Planning Manager. So thank you very much, gentlemen. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. We started the evening talking, having a robust discussion about downtown and economic development in general. The workshop tonight will focus us on the north end of town, where there has been, I would say, an equal amount of projects and work that are driving us to this point. And so a few months ago, we came to you with the recommendation council ultimately awarded Perkins and Will to be our primary consultant, walking the city through the creation of a specific plan. What is a specific plan? What's the general plan? Why are we working on all this at the moment? And the timing could not be better. We are a year away from adopting, having a new general plan that'll take us into mid-century. A specific plan is very much a part of the implementation of the general plan. So think of it as somewhat of a mini general plan focused on an area. We have an area of interest example being our central Petaluma specific plan, which we talked about earlier, Water Street, a much focused planning effort. And so with the bringing online of our second train station on the north end of town, one of those- of town, uh, one of those factors, um, driving us to, to think about the corridor, to think about the area, walking area, the biking area around the new train station, as an opportunity for us to think not just about housing, but economic and business development. Um, much of McDowell, um, corridor has a number of well-established businesses. It's somewhat of our, um, health services area, um, and so all of that, uh, gives us and lends us an opportunity for us to really think about it and really engage the community, um, in different ways. And so, tonight, before we embark on that, we did a kickoff with our, uh, primary consultant. We're going to start to dig real deep, um, on the area that, um, surrounds the train station. We are looking for a, uh, groundbreaking date for the Denko project, which is 131 units, um, just adjacent to the train station, uh, and so we look to carry that momentum through the specific plan. I'm joined here by our planning manager, Andrew Triple, uh, to give a presentation about how we want to thoughtfully and meaningfully engage with the community, those that are directly impacted, um, within this planning area, uh, so that we can have a robust conversation, robust engagement, so we have a planning process that takes us into that mid-century, um, with the community in mind. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Great, thank you, Brian, and, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this evening, I'll be offering the presentation on behalf of, uh, Tom Ford, who is the project manager for the Petaluma North Smart Station Specific Plan Project. Tom is actually, um, out of town participating with an American Planning Association, uh, Community Action Planning Project in Colusa. So, um, happy for him to be there, and I'm happy to be here. Um, so this evening, we're going to be, uh, proposing an engagement model for policy planning, uh, and we're calling it a model because it's applicable to, uh, the Petaluma North Smart Station PDA Specific Plan Project, but we also potentially could see it as a model for future planning efforts, especially for the smaller specific plan, um, scale of a policy planning effort. And so, uh, this evening's, uh, presentation outline will include the project approach, uh, some background on the specific plan project, uh, features of the proposed Community Outreach Partners Working Group, how it integrates with the planning process, and then a request for council discussion. So we've, uh, gotten in the habit of presenting the, very slowly evidently, there we go, presenting the project timeline. This, uh, specific plan is funded by an MTC, a Priority Development Area Grant, uh, Funding Program, and it does, uh, the funding does conclude at the end of this year, the early part of next year. And so we are on a compressed timeline and on a project-specific budget, so it's very important that we always reflect upon the timeline. We can see here that we are in the data gathering and focus group, um, exploration phase in fall of this year, through winter and into the spring. Um, we'll be doing some visioning work, uh, developing some design alternatives, and then, uh, in the springtime, landing on the, the preferred options and beginning the environmental review, the EIR, that's required. Summertime, be drafting the specific plan, uh, completing the EIR, and then, uh, in the fall of, or winter of 2026, spring of 27, bringing that, uh, proposed, uh, plan forward to Planning Commission and City Council for review. The, um, the, of course, the planning area is located along North McDowell Boulevard, um, headed north from East Washington up to and around, uh, the intersection with Corona Road. It really has two features to it. The first is the, uh, half-mile distance from the Petaluma North Smart Station, located there, uh, where the green, the green asterisk is. And then it also has the more elongated feature along North McDowell that reflects the priority development area that was established, uh, at the request of council, um, earlier in the, in, uh, 2020 timeframe. The, uh, Community Outreach Partners Working Group, uh, would support the specific plan project by building trust, amplifying outreach efforts, enhancing community participation, and then we would also be asking the group to provide input and feedback on project deliverables. And so to take a step back and think about specific plans in context, they do sit as a, a more specific plan than the general plan, so typically they will follow a general plan. The general plan update has been aware of, uh, this specific plan project for a couple of years now, and so, um, we are using the general plan update to inform the specific plan, uh, but then also extending upon it. So the specific plans really bridge the gap between the goals in a general plan and then the regulations that would implement that plan. They do this by doing two things, they plan and they implement. Uh, they tend to focus on smaller areas, uh, geographic areas in the general plan, could be a neighborhood, or in this case, the, uh, Priority Development Area. They could focus on a single aspect of the built environment, uh, such as, uh, bike mobility or sewer infrastructure, or they could be a single issue, single policy issue like affordable housing. In this case, as we'll see, this specific plan is going to be more broad than a single issue, uh, and certainly more detailed and comprehensive than a single aspect of the built environment. But they can vary in scope and purpose, and that gives, that makes them appealing because of their flexibility. There are some requirements, however, under California state law. The first is that they have to be vertically consistent with the general plan and the zoning and development regulations for the area. They can propose new regulations for adoption, but, uh, those would have to, those would require zoning amendments. And they also have to be adopted in the same manner as the general plan, which is through a legislative action, uh, requiring public hearings, documentation, and conformity with the regulations of other applicable, uh, governing bodies or agencies. And then the, uh, the final requirement is that they have to contain a program of implementation measures. Uh, that could be the zoning, uh, as was previously discussed, but could include other programs, CIP projects, financing tools, and so forth. And so working with the planning consultant Perkins and Will and their consulting team, uh, this is a slide that describes how they'll be building on the general plan foundation through the vision statement of the, uh, general plan update, its proposed guiding principles, the general plan pillars, and then of course, city council's goals. And those, uh, tend to come together in three, um, um, legs of the specific plan. Climate resilience, which would include, uh, the city's goal of achieving carbon neutrality by 2030, efforts to preserve the natural environment, and then to address the impacts of climate change. Then, uh, the healthy communities leg, which would ensure health and wellness, would seek to connect the east and west sides and would honor Petaluma's heritage. And then finally, equitable development, uh, social and economic justice, promoting a diversity of, uh, housing options, and then to, uh, reflect upon Brian's presentation earlier this evening, uh, forward-looking economic development that would seek to understand, um, business opportunities within the planning area, as well as the needs of employers, employees, and so forth. This is an example of one of the plan components, and, uh, this was generated by the planning team. And, uh, this is part of the climate resilience strategy. This is actually an existing condition slide that was generated using general plan update data, uh, where we can see that, uh, just as an example of the type of work that they'll be doing, uh, they were mapping the flood and sea level rise in the planning area, as well as some important, uh, natural features, uh, such as parks and, uh, greenways. Then, um, another area that they'll be studying and working on is, of course, the healthy communities component, uh, which is, uh, looking into safe, accessible, and low-carbon mobility options. And so we can see the mapping of some of the key, uh, features within the plan area, including smart and other paths of travel, uh, including bicycle networks. And then finally, uh, the third plan component is equitable development, and with a focus on ensuring flexibility for long-term growth. So I think that's where we can really expect to see, um, some experimentation and some proposals around streamlining, around how we are able to be more flexible, be more responsive, not just a housing production, but also, uh, economic development activity. Uh, this points out some of the key, uh, important housing, education, uh, and health-related, uh, highlights in the planning area, ranging from the mobile home parks, uh, the residents we look forward to engaging within the planning process, and then, uh, the Santa Rosa Junior College Petaluma Campus, which is an institutional anchor, uh, that is, is greatly impacted by and impacts and, and, uh, benefits from the plan area. And then, of course, Petaluma Valley Hospital is an example of a medical anchor institution. And so again, the, um, the planning process looked at from a different perspective, existing conditions, which we're working on now, then moving into the plan visioning, development of the framework, then developing the plan itself and preparing the, the environmental impact report. This then is the community engagement strategy that has been proposed by the planning team that they'll be implementing with the supportive plan to place, city staff and the other, um, uh, plan consultants. Uh, it shows the stakeholder focus group meetings, the plan visioning effort, which is a charrette visioning, um, activity, open houses, pop-up events, uh, stakeholder and focus group meetings, a community workshop, and additional pop-up events, and then we move into our public review process as the, the plan, the draft plan is developed. Uh, this is bringing them both together, so now we've overlaid the plan process with the community engagement process and showing where we're at, and how some of those engagement activities will, will spread across the planning process. And then finally, some of the key outreach activities under the areas of stakeholder and focus group meetings, uh, plan visioning, some examples of pop-up events, open house activities, and community workshops. And then finally, that brings us back then to, uh, the working group model, the Community Outreach Partners Working Group. And again, the goals of the group would be to, uh, to build and support community trust development efforts, amplifying outreach efforts, enhancing, uh, community participation, um, opportunities, and really serving to support the, the planning process and the plan development work by connecting us with the constituencies that are represented by the members of, uh, the working group. So the idea is that that communication would flow both upward to the planning team through, in part, through the working group members, but at the same time, the members can take information about the planning process back to their constituencies, whether those are residents in the community, employers, businesses, institutions, and so forth. And so it would interact, we did this based upon, uh, the interactions with the plan process in a formal manner, in the form of bringing the working group members together, or really based upon the activities of the plan. So there was a question to staff, um, posed by the council that we responded to this afternoon, would we convene the working group on a monthly basis or every two months, given that it's a very compressed planning effort? And, uh, this, of course, is what we are proposing, that we look at it as sort of a points in time of the plan development process, as opposed to committing to a monthly convening, um, in part because then it aligns with the plan development process, but then also the goal of the working group is to be administratively efficient, both in terms of the time spent, uh, convening the working group as well as the cost. So the key working group features, it would be informal and a staff-facilitated working group. It's advisory in nature, and it seeks to amplify the outreach efforts of the planning project. It's, it's established with the idea that the members are best positioned to provide community input. They're interacting with their constituencies, they're understanding the wants and needs of their constituencies, and they're able to communicate those to, uh, the planning team, along with the other efforts of public outreach and opportunities that we have for individuals to, uh, communicate with the planning team. Um, another from an administrative efficiency perspective, it would not be subject to Brown Act, although all of its meetings would be open to the public. And then, um, it would seek to build long, enduring community relationships that would extend far beyond the planning effort and really become the basis for the plan implementation that is a, uh, key feature of specific plans. So looking at some of the key features, uh, it's self-supported, non-legislative and advisory. As I said, it's not subject to Brown Act, um, and it would assist with focused outreach. It seeks to facilitate active participation, amplify outreach, and provide targeted, um, uh, feedback. And then, uh, members would be invited to, to submit applications, uh, to be chosen to participate, uh, and it would be based on city council input, as well as referrals from the council and from the community. The meetings would be convened as needed based upon the planning project. Uh, they would be informal in the sense that they would be discussion-oriented. The, uh, the working group members would both be receiving some of the, uh, production or deliverables from the planning process, uh, for, for input and comment, as well as they would be able to, uh, respond, looking forward in the planning process, to help the planning, uh, team understand how best to implement the next steps. And then the budget impact would be minimal. Um, there is a modest budget for refreshment in materials that is included in the overall, uh, specific plan project budget, so no additional funding needed, uh, given under the current scope that we're proposing. And then it would be convened by the, um, staff who are managing and implementing the planning project. Again, the roles of the, the members would be to participate in discussion sessions, facilitate accessibility on behalf of the community, disseminate accurate information. We would really like to use the members to, uh, be able to share information and be resources for, uh, their constituents and members of the community. Um, importantly also is to be able to reflect upon, uh, the community's lived experiences and have those lived experiences become fully integrated into the plan process, uh, to support inclusion and transparency, and finally provide contextual insight. So the, the scope of the working group right now, the composition proposed is at least 12 members, uh, from diverse backgrounds, and then, uh, members of the, um, CCBs such as Planning Commission, uh, PBAC, and Transit Advisory Committee, uh, they would also be invited to participate. However, their membership would not, uh, exceed more than, than 50% of any of the, of any one CCB, um, in order to avoid a Brown Act convening. So again, some of the advantages of this approach, this working group model, is that it's flexible, it can be optimized to meet the community's needs, it can be tied specifically to the, uh, specific plan process, so it's efficient, and it capitalizes on scoped work products, uh, so there's minimal budget impact, and, um, as currently scoped, no additional requests for funding. The deliverables would of course be a specific plan that reflects the community's values, uh, which is the primary, uh, goal and deliverable of the project, um, to be able to summarize community input, um, for integration into the, the planning effort, uh, focused participation in outreach activities, and then, um, being able to provide quotes, testimonials, and share, uh, the lived experiences in order to support the plan process. Uh, looking at the, the composition of the working group, and again, the, the, the number 12 is, um, is, just seems like a good number to be representative, but also for staff to be able to administer it, but certainly it could be more than 12. it, but certainly it could be more than 12 if that's the desire of the council in order to achieve appropriate representation. But we would look at representatives of residents and neighborhood groups, business representatives, healthcare, certainly because of the Petaluma Valley Hospital, as well as the, our other institutional anchor, the junior college, the commission or CCB representatives, and then one to two G-PAC representatives to really be able to bring forward the general plan update work that is so foundational to the specific plan project. So the proposed action that staff is asking council to take on in this workshop this evening is to provide input on the proposed working group composition pursuant to the recommendations offered in the staff report, and then any other input on the proposed outreach. And then finally, to reflect upon, again, the composition. There we go. Listing out the residents, business representatives, examples, healthcare representatives, CCB representatives, G-PAC, and then newer emerging business representatives and the junior college. And so Mayor, with that, that concludes staff's presentation. We look forward to discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation, and I think we have, I mean, the city has taken some criticism for its defectiveness of some of its past community engagement, and I think not without some cause, and also in part because it is so hard to actually get good participation and engagement. So focusing on what creates that, I think is the great conversation we want to have here tonight. What team does give us great engagement? And so this moment now will be questions of the presentation. We will then go to a public comment on the topic, and we'll come back, and I assume when back will be the robust part of the dialogue, and the question part now will be very succinct. So who in council has a question for staff? Councilmember Shribbs.
Well, the first question is, are we here to discuss the whole thing or just the forming of this group? Because I have a lot of questions about the whole thing.
Sure. I believe the purpose of this evening's workshop is to discuss the formation of the working group, so to explore that model specifically. If it's helpful to share about the plan development effort, then certainly if that would inform questions that you have or discussion. But I don't think that we would have the resources to delve deeply into a particular component of the plan development process.
Okay, so there's no point of discussing the shape or the locations of the actual properties in the map? Would that be, can we discuss that tonight?
I would encourage the council to focus on the workshop that's at hand. I just wanted to chime in and say that conversation is forthcoming. So as Andrew alluded to, with the timeline, we're happy to pull that back up. There will be opportunities throughout the process before we do a deep dive to talk about shape, size, et cetera. And at that point, we would be coming with the full team, so the team of consultants to help have a robust discussion.
One, two, a couple of concerns, one of my major concerns is tying it to the general plan, which is, which really need to get done by, and improved and done, and put to bed by December 26. And this is extending out, and it's supposed to work with the general plan. I would need to feel comfortable even starting this process, because it's a lot of work to talk and talk and talk and talk, produce 100-page report about all the talking, and nothing actually gets done at the end or gets contributed. So the timeline, I'm worried about the timeline. I think it needs to be completed all the way to the very end by June of 26, if we're going to do anything at all. And the timeline for the input, I feel it needs to be shortened to two months total. We're not six months, is what it looks like.
We're going to put this in the form of a question.
Right.
So we're going to say, can the...
Anyway, so are those things up for discussion and questions, or are we just talking about the composition of the group tonight?
I would focus on the composition and the direction, because really, this is part of a larger outreach and engagement strategy. So based on the conversation that we have tonight, it's going to inform how we can roll out, perhaps cut some time down, but really, we need to set an expectation on the level of engagement upfront, so that we don't go six, you know, three months down the line expecting something else, and then that's sort of, that's typically where the delays are happening. I am keenly aware, our number one priority is to conclude the general plan update, and I assure you, this is not taking any attention away from that. The other piece I'll just mention, there's also engagement fatigue. So that there is a, I think, a strategic reason for us to start thinking about this as we get closer to the conclusion of the general plan update, so that it's not seeming like we're talking about plans for the next decade, as we kicked off the general plan update in 2021. So the timing, I believe, is on point. MTC believes it's on point, and really, we're just, we're trying to have a focused discussion on how the engagement, how this specific component of the engagement fits into the larger timeline. And so long as we can hit that, then we can have a conversation about, you know, shortening the timeline, et cetera, but we also don't want to discount the engagement that we have before us.
Okay, so for the engagement part, for the numbers of people and the number of meetings we're going to have, for the folks engaged, then I don't quite understand what their actual assignments might be as individuals that, once they join. Are they going to be required over between the six to eight weeks to actually go out and canvass all sorts of things, canvass other people, grab all sorts of things, and bring it back to the group for effort? Are they going to be the key people to gather information? Or are they there just to advise you on how to gather the information? I'm not quite sure what they're actually doing.
Sure. Well, we gather information in a variety of manners. For instance, we've already taken quite a lot of data that was developed as part of the general plan update and delivered it to the planning team as part of their, the existing conditions work that's ongoing right now. And then also, the team has held focus groups with several of the different stakeholder groups. We're preparing for a community meeting later this month, as well as in December, the visioning, the day-long visioning charrette and associated community open house. So there's activities that are ongoing at the same time that we would convene the working group. What we're hoping from the working group is that based upon the relationships that they have with their constituencies and with members of the community, that they're able to share information on behalf of us and bring information back to us that may be more nuanced and more unique than what we're able to gather through the engagement activities that are being planned, otherwise, the pop-up events, the community meetings, and things like that. So it doesn't work in exclusion to any of the other engagement activities or to the plan development process. It works alongside it and then becomes an additional unique point of interaction to support engagement, and then to support the planning team's knowledge development and execution.
Right, so I'd be concerned about the workflow of what these individuals, if I'm, if I was to be on that committee and I offered to be there, so the amount of work that's expected of me and what I need to do and why I'm meeting every six to eight weeks, so, and why is it every six to eight weeks? And then what am I expected to do kind of in between that period of time? How much work do I need to do? How many hours do I have to be there? Do we have the number, right number of people for the amount of hours of work that you're actually expecting to get done? So I'm looking at holistically, if this team is strong enough, large enough, to do the actions that you really want to do this type of outreach, which is pretty intense, or do you just need five people who are committed to do outreach, to make that all happen, and five people get together and do that outreach in two months? Could they do it in just two months for the information that you actually need? Or do you actually need them to have, create ideas and have them share those ideas out, come back with new ideas, have them share out new ideas and have them come back in? So it's a reiterative? Is that the process, a reiterative process? So it's just like, I'm trying to get a feel for the holistic approach, for the volume of work, the amount of people it's being done, the result that's going to come in.
And so we should allow the answer?
So that's what I want to hear back, is that type of holistic approach. What, that's what I need to hear, not, not the numbers of people, because I don't understand.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think it's more than five, right? It would be a lot of work for five people. But a working group of 20 is a lot to manage, you know, and to convene and to administer those meetings and such. So it is trying to find the balance, but I think a lot of the size depends upon the response that we would get to the opportunity. You know, if you, if we have applicants who are representing constituencies and who are demonstrating that they're able to take the planning process out to their constituencies to talk about it, to support our effort, then I think that would be important to have them on the working group. And we would want to encourage that, and not limit it based upon an arbitrary number.
If I may, we're going to try and get to, I mean, I think we're both dealing in concepts, and I think we want to bring it down to numbers. So I think what you're saying is you want a manageable number, which each of us may have a different opinion on. You're saying you wish to have them participate as much as they feel their interest allows and their constituencies allows, so it's not a fixed number. And so we're looking for engagement, and so we're open to, very much, we're open to expertise. So I think that's the answer to your question. There is no specific.
Okay. Fine, that's a much better answer than what I was...
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Quinn?
Yeah, so I know with regards to the, you listed a number of sort of positions from ideal groups that you would like to see participation from. If you didn't get interested applicants that sort of neatly fit that, but you received other qualified applicants, would they be excluded because they're not part of one of those predefined groups?
No, not at all, not at all. Those are, those are fairly standard stakeholder groups for a planning process. That doesn't mean at all that, you know, there may be, for instance, I think there's a lot of emerging business types, emerging small business owners, and doing some very interesting work in the study area. And it would be great to have them as a group to talk specifically about the challenges they face as, you know, small startup businesses, or as creative types trying to find a place in the study area. So that, they would be just as valuable as, say, a corporate representative from Friedman's or a larger organization like that.
Sure. I just had in mind, you know, maybe community members who didn't fit those, you know, the designated criteria, but may have an interest in transit-oriented development, planning, that sort of thing. So anyway, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Carter Thompson?
I'm just curious if we'd be looking for maybe a student from SRJC or Sonoma State, because Sonoma State has, you know, a program with geography, environment, engineering, and planning, and bring a student in. And I'm actually getting the name of whoever teaches this program, and I will get it to you. I think that would be of real value to bring a college student in that's actually in a program.
Okay.
And the other thing is, you know, like with the surrounding areas of...
Questions, right?
Hmm? Oh. You know, I want to see the neighborhoods represented. And, and I just have a question, like if, like the planning commissioners, I mean, we have some good planning commissioners, would they be able to participate in this? Or, so like one person from the planning commission, maybe?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, that's, we were anticipating that we would have representatives, at least from the planning commission, from P-Back, and from the Transit Advisory Committee, perhaps even the Climate Action Commission.
Right.
And then, of course, G-PAC, who's been working on the general plan. We also do have the names of student leaders from the junior college. The junior college is very excited to have students participate in this planning effort, as is one of the high schools over in East Petaluma, and we've been in contact with them as well. But thank you for the Sonoma State reference and suggestion, because you're right, they do have a great program up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarle?
So the formation of this group is really based on outreach, right? Just doing a lot of outreach to develop this plan, and, you know, we're paying the consultant at least 1.2 million, correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, I wonder why, because I think I, our staff's pretty good at outreach, right, and talking to the community. How come staff isn't doing this sort of thing themselves, you know? And by doing that, you know, putting 1.2 million into our budget from that grant, you know, in whichever bucket it needs to go into, but helping, on one hand, chip away at that and to develop it.
Great question. Just a point of clarification, we aren't anticipating the, the community outreach partners to be actively doing the engagement. Perkins and Will has a team planned to place, which we are familiar with through the general plan process, that will be doing, will be organizing, will be facilitating. This is just to make sure that we're doing a planning process that includes the voice of those that are most impacted, directly impacted. There is staff time of that $1.1 million grant set aside for our staff to oversee and project manage, so there's a carve-out there, so we are maximizing.
With the majority is to them, correct?
Them being the Perkins, so the Perkins and Will, yeah, so there was a scope that was sent out. I think it's roughly 800, 850. So, yeah, they are absolutely the ones, I mean, there's a lot of similarities to the general plan update, so part of the inspiration that we're drawing from is our general plan advisory committee, right? So we, we have a group, a very diverse set of, and I think more or less 12 are active participants even for that one, for that group. But they're the ones, they're the voices, the leaders within the city that are helping to advise through this process, so we're not sending, we're not expecting people to knock on doors, per se. It's really to help play this advisory role to the city, to the city staff, so we get this thing right, right? The slide deck that was up earlier talked about getting the plan, we got to get the vision right from the start. We need to come up with some guiding principles, very much like the general plan, in order for us to stay on track, make sure this plan actually does what we want it to, which is, how do we create this transit-oriented community around our new second train station? How do we leverage that to be a creation for new businesses, new economy, et cetera?
Want to kind of back up a little to what you said. Were you suggesting that G-PAC had the authority to push that 1.2 million towards a consultant?
The general plan, so separate project general plan did not have grant funding attached to it, so this is a separate grant funded through our metropolitan transportation committee, so there's no connection. I was, the connection I was making was just, we have an advisory committee for the overarching general plan update, and this is a fairly standard way to have the local voices represent and help inform a city planning process.
I'll save the rest for comment.
Okay. And Vice Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. If we're going to reach out to the Santa Rosa Junior College, can we also reach out to the local high school? I met twice now with the Petaluma High, and I know Casa Grande is nearby, and they would probably have some future Petalumans in their class. in their classes that would be perfect to be on that committee. And also our senior population, there's a lot of mobile homes and a lot of seniors in that area. And they have different needs than the rest of us do. So we're going to have to think about transportation. Also, we have a section of our community that English is a second language. So we're going to need to worry about interpretation, interpreters at these meetings or the material and more than just English. And also, that area is right up against our agricultural properties. And so we really need to reach out and maybe get a representative from those maybe property owners, stakeholders. I heard a lot over the weekend how hate trucks can't do roundabouts. So, and there is a big roundabout there and I'm like, I didn't know. Anyway, and are the meetings going to be open to the public?
Yes, to the last question. The meetings will be open to the public. We'll advertise them as such. And then also, I believe Perkins and Will is contracted to do meeting notes and then we'll post all that on the website. And we'll be providing regular updates throughout this process, both to the council and to the community. And then to your question about the ag component, I mean, that's really one of the drivers to want to do a specific plan. So this goes back to 1989. Director Moore was likely in one of these seats here, talking about the Eli Corona-specific plan. And so that was true, I mean, that was really the last time. I think it's roughly 650 acres. As we started to expand the east side northbound, that was really when, the last time we sort of had a thoughtful discussion. And now we're presented with this opportunity, regional transit connector. And so a lot of the conversations that we're having in and around the downtown station, you know, it behooves us to have that conversation around the new station. This was also, this directly ties into council's leadership and the community showing up to extend our urban growth boundary with the caveat that any future annexation that is up for discussion has a lot of these similar themes in mind, transit-oriented development, housing that's affordable. And so there is a little, I don't want to say little, but it's, it's a piece of the pie around the station that has, I, I believe there's some people in the audience that would be happy to talk about that in public comment. But also, how do we thoughtfully do that if and when that happens? If council decides that's a place we want to consider as a community and we want to talk to the community about it, we should be in the driver's seat. And that's what this specific plan does.
Great. Also, if a member of the focus group needs to leave the group, what is going to be the process to replace that member? We have that currently with our Public Safety Committee. When we have somebody resign, we have to put in place another person or decide to keep it vacant. So we have to keep that in mind.
We absolutely keep that in mind. We don't have to look further than the general plan advisory committee, you know, with these, especially with these multi-year processes. You know, to the best of our ability, to the best of our community's ability, they try to stick with it for the long haul. We have people that move out of the area. We have, you know, different life circumstances. This goes back to Councilman Quinn's question about, are we going to be so restrictive? And we just, we can't do that. And so if a particular voice, maybe there's a youth voice that is engaged from the start, drops off, we would want to have a really hard, thoughtful conversation about replacing that voice so that we have that continuity throughout the process. And so in a perfect world, we have no drop-offs, but we'll be ready if and when that happens.
And thank you. I, I believe it's going to be a voice of the community and I just want fair representation of our community.
Thank you. Great goal, I'm sure we all agree. Councilmember Cato Thompson, did you have a question?
I would, it's not really a question, but I've already like reached, I've been reaching out to Brody Ranch for quite a while, just letting them know this is, process is going to happen. And, and I know that they would like to be represented. And so, you know, when you're looking at this, you know, how many representatives from like an area like Brody Ranch versus, you know, so you have enough people in there? So, and, and that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. My question is more looking back on the engagement efforts we've made on the general plan and on the overlay and other things. And, you know, we're, we're not getting the engagement we want from the public when we want it. And so I'd really like to see that different on this one. And, and so for me, that sounds like more intense is more, you get better engagement if you run it intense. Can we shorten the schedule? Can we hit those meetings earlier? Even if it means staff's not ready to start the date they thought they were going to start, just so you have content and don't lose everybody's focus. Can we run a much tighter schedule on this and still get quality?
I believe we can. I think also having ongoing conversations, you know, with other entities in Petaluma, you know, having a number of conversations with Dave Alden, with Urban Chat, on how, you know, how are people engaging with our community? How are we getting a represent, representation, a true representation of our community? And we have to create engagement opportunities that are interesting. We've started as part of this process to work with one of our city staff members who has been organizing these meetups through John Crowley's efforts to engage with young professionals. Most young professionals, they're not showing up, right? We need to make sure we are engaging with them in a way. And a lot of that is the online medium. That's what we're hearing. How do we get more participation? So we need to be creative. We need to work with our partners on the ground that are doing good work in this space so that we can have some time shaved off and be effective.
I think, I think we'll look to turn intentional things into contractual things so that we have deadlines and hold to them. Councilmember DeCarly, you had a other question?
Yeah, I had a couple more that came up. The selection process for the group, is it going to be a lottery system similar to what Healthy Democracy did? Or, like, how, how are people really going to be picked for this?
That's a, a great example. I mean, that's sort of what this workshop is about. If, if there is an interest for us to look at assembling the group a certain way. What I'm accustomed to is we would open up a recruitment. I've done this in, in the past. It would not be atypical to solicit interest through an application process. And similar to what we do with a number of different efforts, having the right city staff go through and, and make a, a selection. That said, this is what the workshop's for. So if there's a, a way that the council wants us to proceed, this is a time to opine.
Well, I, I guess what would maybe help determine something like that also is what, I know you've kind of talked about it in, in a broader scope, but what are we really looking for the group to do? Because the defined area is probably at least 80% developed. So are we trying to lead them in a direction that, you know, well, we look at all these areas that are, I mean, they're mostly houses, you know, of different types. Are we, are we looking for them to say that, well, maybe this could be something else someday? Is that what staff's suggesting? Or are we just looking at the smaller undeveloped area within, within the defined area?
So it sounds like we're having some technical difficulties. So I'm going to try to pivot and get Andrew's slide deck up on my computer. Short answer though is what's before us. So right now, we're in the existing conditions phase. We're going to shift, once that's complete, to the planned vision. And so if the community through this process identifies a vision of, I'm just going to put that out there, no change, right? We, we see that there's a new train station. We, after looking at the existing conditions, there isn't a desire, there isn't an appetite to look at the north end of town somewhat differently with the new train station. That's going to come up in the vision, right? So that's why it's so important that we get a diverse set of voices and participation to help form that vision, not just in and around the station, but along the corridor. Brody Ranch was mentioned earlier. That's one of our newer housing stock. I wouldn't anticipate that to, to redevelop in, in some way. It's quite established. So that's where we need those voices to say, okay, as we start to look at these other areas, along McDowell, the potential for annexation, how should, how should the city be looking at it? And that's why it's so important for us to get it right from the start with this group.
Okay, yeah, because it just, it still doesn't seem clear what we're intending to do in, in this area. And so that makes it hard to kind of understand, like, who, who, what is the group about?
Well, I think that's a, that's a really great point. You're right, it is, a majority of the area is largely developed. I think it's, it's asking current residents, business owners, what's missing? What is it that, that could improve quality of life, improve sense of place in the study area? We do have development opportunities around, within that half mile of the train station. There are some underdeveloped properties as well as vacant properties. So we could see new development activity there. And, and we may, we may find areas within the study area where redevelopment could happen in a more preferred pattern that would increase housing opportunities or, or increase, you know, commercial opportunities for new businesses. So I think that's an important part of this initial existing conditions phase and of working with the community, with, with various representatives and stakeholders to understand what's missing, what are the needs, what are the wants? And, and how can, how can, you know, the live, work, play experience in the study area be enhanced?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I kind of want to ask, on the back of that, I mean, we have a general plan draft pretty well established for the McDowell corridor anyway. And, and how do you explain to this member what their latitude is or what their vision scope is differing from a completed draft to a specific plan for the McDowell corridor? And piggybacking on that is, wouldn't people who are bringing different perspectives be more likely to give valuable input as well as people in the existing area? I mean, I, I think if we're saying the community is going to change, I think some of the people change as well. So that's all planning. How do you explain that to the candidate?
Well, the, the general plan update, while it may have assigned the land or designated land uses along the corridor, it didn't do as deep of a dive because it knew that the specific plan would be looking more closely and, and working to align those land uses and, and approaches to, to opportunities, not just with the general plan's broad goals and principles, but also to develop more specific goals and principles for the corridor and for the study area. So the general plan update has been, has been aware of this since 2023 and has been waiting for this specific plan to come forward then.
Thank you. Councilmember Cato Thompson?
It was a little bit frustrating not being able to talk about this property during the general plan process or this site. But hypothetically, the post office might change. What if the footprint ends up being smaller? And so how would you, you know, how would you vision that site being developed? And I think that's what you're looking at, is sites and just seeing what if also. So it's not just a vacant piece of property we're looking at. We're looking at existing and the what-if in the future. And how, how does that actually work within the process? Because you can't really do a zoning change or what, what would happen hypothetically if the post office shrunk?
Well, and I think that's where, that's what's unique about a specific plan is that it both engages the planning process, but also the implementation process. So it can look forward. You know, we have, we have many properties where the, the zoning may not align with what the property developed, how it's developed and currently used. But when it is looking forward 20 years and it is looking at, you know, through the, through the existing conditions research, we learned from the post office that perhaps they do have a plan to, to resize that facility based upon demand or other factors. I don't know that I'm using, you know, this as an example. But, but that's, that's a great opportunity to think about, okay, what, what might a redevelopment opportunity there look like? And how do you then align your zoning with the future opportunities that may emerge?
Okay, let's take this out to a public comment and then we'll come back to council for deliberation on this. May we have our messaging for public comment?
Yes, we did actually receive one public comment late this afternoon on this item. And so that'll be posted on the website. And I do have one card, but members of the public who would like to speak, please bring your speaker cards to my desk. If you've not already done so, speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
So we have Darren Racketson to lead off, Dave Alden up next.
Three whole minutes. I don't know what I can do with all this time. So I, I looked at this question and it sounds like this may be kind of a foregone conclusion. The funding is there, the direction's already there. But I'm thinking back to when, you know, the downtown kind of thing that was the hotel first came forward. And one of my brilliant ideas was, why don't we do a specific plan for downtown? And I was quickly regaled with stories of giant specific plans that sit unopened since they were drafted. Did the time and effort lead to something that was actionable? Did it lead to development outcomes superior than just the market operating? You know, what, what were the goals? So when I thought about this plan more and I looked at, you know, the fact that the site is already partially developed, obviously it's privately owned. You know, when, when you think about a master plan for something like the fairgrounds, which the city owns, total latitude of planning process is super informative because you have all the latitude in the world to dictate what happens there. I would say even a downtown plan, there's like historic resources to build around. There were those of us at that meeting with a developer, a planning director from Fresno, talking about their really successful downtown specific plan that planned around every historic resource. This is an area not quite like that. It's not publicly owned. There's not some kind of really valuable historic resources to plan around. And I, maybe I didn't quite read this in the scope, but I'm not sure this like voids future EIR requirements or leads to really predictable outcomes for developers where they almost have very little project level planning and meetings so that this specific plan suddenly allows for development and facilitates development to be much more, much easier. So, you know, I know that we're talking about groups and getting representation. Part of what I read in the staff report and I heard the, the mayor say is like, look, we haven't done great on public engagement. You know, are, are we good at getting public engagement for specific plans like this where we don't control the outcome of the parcels and the market does? What are the drivers we're hoping to introduce that prevent bad development outcomes, I guess? Like, are we really going to get more restrictive or anything? If people around don't want tall, dense, transit-oriented development, are we going to like try to use local control to supersede state law or something? Like so much of the fate of this area feels like it's already been kind of mapped out in a general plan that will be finished. We've got state law that's going to dictate kind of what can happen, really influence the market a lot more than this plan will. the market a lot more than this plan will. So again, this may all be void if this is already decided, and I know we got the grant, but I think it's like, if you get the grant, and the staff report says it could cost more than the grant to do this, do you have to do it? Do we have to spend the time and attention? Are there other ways? Do you let the market take its course? Because state law is so aligned with what our general plan says. Yeah, yeah. Like I said, when I first brought this up in the context of the downtown, I was hit with, these plans don't work. So I don't wanna see us spend a few years on a plan that won't get used, won't work, and the outcomes can really be attributed to something else. So just wanna throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Alden, to be followed by Dwayne Bellinger.
There is so much that could be said here. What Mr. Rakkison just said, I, I could probably chat with him for an hour on, on his thoughts. But I just wanna talk about types of people who might belong on this body that I wanna make sure we include, and I'm not sure I see it in the list as currently laid out. And I'm talking, when I make these comments, I'm really thinking more about the annexation quadrant than I am about the existing development area. Subject expert, and this is really sort of seconding something that Councilmember Quint said. I don't wanna mention names, wouldn't be fair to him to, to bring him up, but there is a local architect, German-born, Czechoslovak, Czech Republic-educated, whose focus was on transit-oriented development. You know, maybe not real tall buildings, but buildings that just deliver people effectively to transit. He's lived in Petaluma for years. He loves being here. He's never had a chance to work on something like this. He doesn't live anywhere near this area, but he'd be such a great person to have there, to finally bring that experience to bear on something that pertains to Petaluma. So I think subject expert is something we need to be, to open the door for. Second, and I know we already do this on some committees, I wanna make sure we do it here, non-city residents. If we're gonna annex property, we could very well, if we don't allow non-city residents to be on this committee, we could be planning for somebody's property on a, with a body that they don't get to be part of. So we need to open the door for non-city residents. And the last, and this may not fit with what's, where SMART wants to be, but probably the smartest people about TOD are the SMART staff. I was at a conference last week in Portland on transit and TOD with the entire SMART planning staff. We were in rooms together, talking about TOD. We weren't on the same field trips, but I hope they took, took some of the same trips I did to go out and look at transit development around stations in cities roughly the size of Petaluma. Now, those, those are the experts that we need to get to the table to bring us visions that we just maybe don't have, because we've just never had a reason to do something like what the annexation quadrant might become. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Dwayne Bellinger is our last speaker.
Thank you very much. I was especially impressed with Mr. Ho's discussion of Michael Moore's work on giving us what the Architects Committee came here, was it two years ago now, and called a gem of a community in the Crony-Eli Plan. And what I would suggest is that you take a look at the process by which that community was designed and compare it to what you're planning this evening. It would be very interesting to compare those two, and how you end up with a, a gem of a plan, and how else you ended up with the park along, between the rail and Washington, as to how did you come up with that plan? And just, just look at how good planning works, and it, it would be, be interesting to look at the historical process, is where the best communities in the country were planned. And that's one thing I wanted to say. There was another point. It appears that we can go outside of the quarter mile for going south, but we can't go out of the quarter mile for including the one little business that just happens to be right there on Eli. And I think that would be, the, the owner of that would like to be included. It's only a five-acre parcel, but it just, it would seem to be the appropriate addition to your design. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and that closes public comment for the evening. And I'd like to ask staff to maybe try and, some responses here. The one question I would ask for response was whether this specific plan is intended to facilitate development, and whether it, whether it would be strongly incentivized or business as usual. How do you, how do you communicate that to your candidate pool, what the interest is?
Well, I, I feel like the, there's a couple of thoughts. One is, and, and this maybe is responding to Commissioner Rakkison's comments, if the city does not respond to MTC's transit-oriented communities policies through rezonings, through zoning text amendments, through establishment of new development standards, then it's not competitive for OBAG funding in the future. So if the city wants to be competitive for OBAG funding to support transit-oriented development, then it needs to engage in some level of policy planning and, and regulatory change, at least within the half mile of the, the station. So there's that. But I think as, as I shared, and to get specifically to your question, as I shared in response to Councilmember DeCarly's comment, there are development opportunities that exist, certainly within the half mile of the, the station. We don't know yet what other development opportunities might exist, but there, there are quality of life opportunities, creating a sense of place for this neighborhood in East Petaluma, reinforcing this, the transit-oriented development, the walkable environment along McDowell. And so we do believe that there are opportunities there.
So one question about the half-mile state laws that govern in that. They govern building size. Do they govern the density and entirety of a property as well? Or can the city say, well, you can have a four-story, six-story building right here, but we also insist on a park ratio of such and such? What does state law govern in this?
Well, that's, that's a huge question. I mean, there's development that could happen under state law with, and it could re, state law could drive density, it could drive parking ratios, you know, things like that. The, the MTC policies are generally, I would, I would hazard to say that they're, they're closely aligned with state law. And, and so I don't think, though, that we would want state law to drive or to regulate development exclusively in the area.
Okay. And then the last piece of this is, you mentioned OBAG funding. What, what kinds of funding or, or use of funding do you envision needing on, on this? Or eligibility on this?
So I don't believe it's fully formed. Everything we're getting indicated from MTC is, essentially it's gonna be a check, a checkbox. Is the city of Petaluma TOC compliant? And so part of this exercise will allow, this planning process would allow us to make sure that we do come in compliance. How, you know, they haven't talked about how they're gonna distribute any of the funds, but, you know, our-
Let me ask this slightly differently. Would it be infrastructure-type funds for this particular area? Or would it be our eligibility for future efforts, independent of this area?
I would say both, and OBAG isn't just specific to this area, right? This, there, this is essentially a carrot, to say, cities with the opportunity, with the resources, like having a train station, coming into compliance with their policy is essentially gonna net us more points and be more competitive for future funding opportunities.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnicle?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm definitely in favor of having staff lead the outreach. I think it's good for us to build these relationships. I'd like to see us use some innovative tools, or learn how to use those, so that it becomes more of a model. I forwarded on some stuff to a city manager and Mr. Ho. I agree that the subject matter experts, including the, I know exactly the person that Dave mentioned, makes sense to reach out to. You know, this is really like, in the, on the spectrum of planning versus implementation, I expect to see this much more on the implementation side. And so I think the, the working group that you've put together is good, but I feel like it's more of a planning working group. And when I would think of an implementation working group, it's like, where's the investors? Where's the people? Like, where, who are we asking to say, how can we make this an attractive investment opportunity for you? And, because I'm not doing this to, to qualify for grants from, from A-BAG. I wanna do this to attract private capital, and that's gonna help us bring in the, the public money, anyway. So I think it's, it's good to have the sort of community, like, you know, what would you want in this area? What would you like to see within a 10-minute walk, so that we can do more visioning? But like, some of that should be carried out in the general plan. But what I really wanna see is, is like, you know, I feel like that USPS spot is pretty critical for us to get a handle on, and hopefully create some long-term vision of them moving off of it. I'd love to just move those trucks over toward Lakeville to the other facility and take truck routes off of McDowell, if we can, or take those truck, those truck trips off of McDowell, and make that something that's more transit-serving. I think key criteria for people on the working group, outside of expertise, people who use transit. If you're gonna have businesses on there, businesses that their employees can use transit to get there, right? Like, if we're trying to do this for, to, to drive use of the SMART train and see the actual ROI on the SMART train, let's focus on, one, implementation, and, two, the types of businesses and lifestyles that are, that benefit from transit and wanna use it. So I wanna make sure that those are key criteria, definite on the USPS engagement. And then I'd like to see us in our surveys, and in our focus groups, and in things like that, to make them values-based, versus like image-based, and height-based, and density-based, and things like that, like these policy questions. I'd love to have our, like, surveys really tease out the community's values. We haven't done that. Like, do you want this city to be an affordable place? Do you want it to be a place where young families can afford to buy a house? Do you want it to be a place where it's safe to cross the street and have your kid ride their bike across town? I bet you we see a lot of people that say that on the values responses, and I'd love to see more of that, like, the values actually driving our policies, because I feel like we show up with these focus groups, and we're showing them policy decisions, and there's no context for it. So I, I'd really like to make the, the actual surveys really heavily values-based. The other thing is, is just noting in this, in this area, there's like a good number of mobile home parks, and apartment buildings, and things like that, and those can be really great opportunities, and I'm, you know, meals, pizza in a community space, and you've got your, your event. So I wouldn't shy away from that. HOAs, meetings with Brody Ranch, things like that. But I think the, the big one for me that's missing from here is, is like, the people who are gonna spend money on this, because to me, this, like, I would say push the envelope on what you think is comfortable in terms of, like, actually making this an investment opportunity. If this comes back with a bunch of restrictive zoning and things like that, like, let us push back on that. That's what we're here to do. Like, we've got so many plans, there's so much fatigue, like, we need to uncork the, the actual investment in the community.
Councilmember Kate Thompson?
When I was down in the league meeting a few months ago, city manager and I, we talked to a group, and that's kind of what they do. They look at a big swaths of land, and then they come up with a creation. And, and they're local, they're innovative, and that's what I would like to see, you know, businesses coming in here that can bring the capital in to actually move projects through. And, I mean, it's around a transit station, so we know there's gonna be housing, but there has to be all the other, other amenities that go with housing also. And, and I think that is important, and I think we just need to realize that, that downtown SMART station and the north SMART station really connect the town together. And so I think you're gonna see a lot of interconnectivity just because of that. And I don't think, I agree with actually everything that Councilmember Barnicle said, but I really do think we need to find investors who have that vision for what a transit-oriented development can be, and what the vision is for the future. And the post office is, I mean, I would like to see them move into one consolidated building instead of having the two that we have now, which doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. I'm just gonna plug this one. There's, I mean, at least over 100 trucks going every day to that post office. It's clogging the streets, and it's ruining our streets. And so it would be really nice to, if we could encourage them to move forward on that, because that would make a huge difference for this plan.
I'm kinda hearing us drift into the RFP for the specific plan, rather than the makeup of this group, but I think they overlap a lot in, in what's, in what's being said, but...
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes, please.
I mean, as far as like the, the makeup of the committee, they don't have to be east-siders, they need to be people from around the community, and that is the connection, I'm saying, between the train, you know, for the downtown and to here. And I do want an architect on there that really has the big-picture vision.
Okay. Vice Mayor, are you ready?
I was just writing a list of the, the, the component of this focus group. I would like to see at least two youths, two seniors, and I think Councilmember Barnicle said, smart users. So they don't have to be living in that area, but they might use the SMART train. Also, the Brody Ranch, because they have been using that area, and they've been, you know, they have a hard time getting to lug in it, or they're gonna tell me there's, needs to be a better path, or it needs to be better sidewalks. So they have a lot to say. So that's up to two, four, six, eight. Then you've got your professionals, so at least two professionals, like Mr. Alden mentioned, and then, you know, two other out, out in the community, people that sit in on these meetings, or people who send us public comments. I think there was one public comment that had a lot of great information, and she would be a great person to have on it. And 15 minutes might mean something to somebody in our age, but somebody in their 80s, it's 15 minutes just to get their walker out of the back of their car. So we have to remember that 15 minutes doesn't mean 15 minutes for everybody. So seniors are super important. And then we've got our youth, who are riding e-bikes everywhere they go, and so they're gonna have different needs, and they're gonna have different career paths and housing needs, you know? We have, and maybe open an oper, conversation with that big property tenant, the, you know, the postal service.
So I'm trying to keep notes and scorecard here as we go, and, and can I push back on a little bit? You said SMART, can we call that transit, as transit users?
Oh, correct. You could do that.
Yeah, okay. Good. Thank you. Councilmember DeCarly?
So in, in considering who would get on a committee like this, you know, part of what I wonder is, where do we draw the line? You know, obviously, there's, there are stakeholders here in the room, too, that have properties that wanna get annexed in, and, yeah, that would make sense for them to be on it, but then what about the neighbors, you know, that are in the county? You know, that will have to then live with this from there out? Or, you know, I don't understand- Or, you know, I don't understand why a healthcare representative would need to be one of the group. You know, I, I think more business should be included in the group, you know, and then I'm also not sure why we would want GPAC representatives on it. We already have GPAC. This, to me, would be a new group, you know, that doesn't include that. So, you know, that's kind of what I think as far as a group makeup goes. I don't like, this was my take on it, but I don't like hearing that we have to burn money to, you know, to qualify for more money. That doesn't seem responsible to me at all, and I don't care if it's MTC money or where it came from. I mean, it's still tax dollars, you know, and, and if the group is 12 people, it's, you know, we're paying $100,000 per person to, to create this. You know, so then, I mean, as far as being in compliance, does, does the committee have to reach a certain conclusion in order to stay in compliance? Or is their, is their opinion, does that, like, as Brian said, check the box? You know, and their outcomes are relevant, but we're still in compliance?
Okay. There's a couple things. So just, I didn't mean to conflate the, I think you threw out a number, 100K per person, and I guess, I, I think you're saying 12 people, 100,000 per person, 1.2 million, if I'm tracking that.
I think that's the grant so far, right?
Yeah, so the grant itself, so, thank you for clarifying that. So the grant itself is to, the goal is to get the actual plan, right? So there's actual funding to act, to develop a plan, at funding to develop the environmental impact report, funding to engage with the community. This is one component of that larger engagement. Andrew walked through earlier, the focus groups, the, you know, general open house format to engage with the broader audience. There was a question earlier about, you know, why not smart and why not the county, and then you also raised that. There is a component of this. Smart's at the table. They're engaged with this process. They'll be participating. Permit Sonoma, which is the county planning agency, is, has already been contacted. They are part of this process. LAFCO, the county formation agency, so this is not being done in a vacuum. We're 100% aware of the, the city limit here. And I thought we did a, a nice, a really good job about the constraints, natural environmental constraints of the area. So there's a lot here. This, what we're trying to accomplish tonight is just one component. What's the best way to represent the community through this process? I don't know if I would necessarily say it's costing us $100,000 per person.
No, I think, I think you've made that point. The whole of the grant, the consultant efforts, a certain piece. Basically, you get the community group for free, once you've paid the, for the consultant that you're doing. So, but that was not the key issue here. Like, for you, you were headed to a point.
Well, I, I mean, I was talking about the, the formation of the group, what kind of people are in it, and then kind of go back to the selection process. I mean, that, that's very important too. I mean, I think we should be choosing a process that, you know, can't demonstrate any bias or manipulation in any way, something that's, you know, I don't know if the lottery process is the right thing. I'm not lobbying for that, but just something that's fair and incorporates whatever groups are decided.
Okay.
No, that's, I mean, that's kind of my comments right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Quint?
Yeah, there were several comments thus far that I, I agree with. I'm not going to go through and, and repeat them. What, what I would say, one thing that, that I'm thinking about that hasn't been talked about thus far is, there's sort of this emerging concept of school-oriented development. And I'm wondering how, as we think about this, we might consider that in this plan. And if there's an opportunity to really kind of zero in on, in schools that are in that, in that zone, or even if there are schools that are on the periphery of this, of the zone, consider expanding it to, you know, think about, you know, development that specifically supports neighborhoods around schools to make schools more walkable. That could somehow be sort of lumped into this. I think that could be-
Thank you very much. Councilmember Shribbs, anything?
First, just a clarifying question, just following up what was asked before. 1.2 million, is that going to get us the actual, specific plan product at the very end of this whole, by '27? Is that, 1 million dollars gets us that, or does it just get, do just the outreach portion?
It gets us the plan and the EIR.
The plan and, so it's the whole package?
The whole thing, yes.
So that's the whole package? Yeah, that makes more sense than spending a million dollars just on outreach. So that, I just wanted to make sure that's very, very clear. Then my concern is that we're going to end up with a plan that's going to be 100 pages plus. It's going to be beautiful with all sorts. It's going to take a year and a half, two years, and we're going to do all this studying and all this writing, and it's going to be a beautiful product, and it's going to go on a shelf and unused. And the main issue, as was, was raised up by Mr. Rakuson, was who's going to actually do the plan at the end? Who's going to actually make it happen? And that's going to be a developer, because over 50%, probably even closer to 90% of this specific plan is going to be focused in on the couple hundred acres that are north of Corona, right, north of the North Smart Station. That's where at least 50%, if not 90% of the effort's actually going to go. What is that going to look like? What should be there? How it should be? What was mentioned also is that, maybe not mentioned so far, is that there's willing landowners who are willing to sell, who would like to sell and get this place developed. It's part of our urban plan now. There's also, I met at least one also, just happened to be in the same place, at Aquas Cafe, talked to him. He's a developer who's actually done a transit-oriented community, not a property, not a thing, a community, a transit-oriented community, who's actually done that development out in another state. Very large, it's about the same size. It would behoove us to actually bring a developer, maybe not that one, but a developer who is specialized, who has done transit-oriented communities, not properties, not, not hotels, not apartment buildings, not, but someone who actually is a community developer, who has the wherewithal to actually make something happen, to, to build something for 5,000 people that has everything we want, 15-minute community, everything we need, and bringing him in or her into the spot, into this committee as one of the members, and says, hey, I'm here, I want to help, I want to do this. You have a landowner who wants to say, I'm, I'm willing to sell, have that, and work together, whatever deal it takes, and say, now, community of your committee, all right, what do we want to do and how we want to do it, and guide the whole development process from the start. I think that's, would be the appropriate way, so that it's actually a finished product, it's not just a plan, that actually he can actually do groundbreaking at day one. He goes and groundbreaks and actually does what we've asked him to do. And that's the only way that this is going to be, not a book on a shelf, is actually have a developer in front, on the spot, who agrees to everything that we want upfront. And that's the actual true planning of development, of investing and making things happen. Otherwise, I think it's a total waste of time.
Okay, so I would agree with that. We're not interested in a plan on a shelf, absolutely not. So I think that's good feedback on how do we bring the end user. There was a question earlier about how, you know, what's the point of a specific plan? It does provide certainty for development. It's orderly development. It's how we want the corridor to change or look over the next, you know, get us through the next century, mid-century, and so I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
So, thank you, all that input. And keeping a scorecard, we're going to come around to trying to get a consensus on certain issues, but my take on things, you know, one of the stressors I've seen in the GPAC is that they seem to be talked to, talked at, and not dialoguing as much as, you know, we really want them to, or we'd want them to in this specific plan. I mean, I think we're asking for engagement. In GPAC, I think we were presenting material for like an up or down vote, or, or, or status report rather than true engagement. So I'm really looking forward to, you know, engagement that everybody respects, even if the outcomes are, you know, you win some, you lose some, but, but we have to have said, people were at the table arguing their point. And, you know, I think what, what Councilmember Shribbs just brought up with having an expert in the room, and you've mentioned that you're going to have a charrette, but I, I think that, that's a tricky point that we need to investigate further about this process, not this panel, but this process. There should be a charrette effort, but it needs to be not a weak effort at a charrette, where you, you know, you, you invite somebody in who talks at you. But I think a true charrette is iterative, where, you know, an approach is laid out, and then everybody gets a chance to talk about why that's got, what it's got good in it, what it's got bad in it, and thinks, I don't think the charrette master can be on the panel in, in my world, but I think that that's a brilliant idea to have that process in front of this group. Because I would like this group to say, we own this thing. You know, we talked to, we, we learned about things. That's why, and having an investor is good in there. Some of the things about a charrette, you'd say, well, you know, I have this parcel I want to build. Is it viable under your rules that anything happens? So that viability has to be there, and experts have to be in the room. But they don't have to be on the panel. They have to be, I mean, stakeholder value on the panel, but I would even have the property owner of, of adjacent properties, I'm good with them. And I was just counting, we talked, we add a subject matter expert, if we add a smart planner, because they are the TOC experts in here, if we add schools, if we add investors, if we add a transit representative and youth representative, we're up to another six. So kind of coming around to the scorecard. I'm kind of okay if it's 20 people, because I think you can still manage 20, and if we want to reach the community, smaller number. So I'm counting what our conversation was pushed us to 20. And we talked about what kinds of experiences. So those were my thoughts on it. And then we talked on the discussion of who picks. What we didn't get after really clearly is that we're delegating, the proposal in, in front of us is to delegate to staff the formation of this group. Are we all comfortable with that? You know, and, and when we say staff, are we talking, Brian's going to take care of this thing himself, or, you know, or, or is, is M Group managing this? And do we want to keep it, you know, with strictly with our rapidly growing internal employee planning group, community development group? Or do we want to bring it back to council? So I haven't heard that. I'd like to go through the group again and hit on the numbers and who picks. Jump.
I have a question on that note, on the, on the selection process. We've had one example dating back to my very first year on the council, Kevin might remember, about having to remove someone from a body because of a mess of social media stuff that came to light afterwards. Can you talk about what type of, it's not a background check, but what type of due diligence you're going to do on the applicants so that we don't wind up with a story in the Argus about something that we had no influence over the selection of?
I would say the bar that we've set on representation would be very similar to our CCB selection. So we would run it very similarly, the level of questions that are generated through that process. I'm familiar with the one example you shared, but in the grand scheme of, you know, how successful, you know, how robust our committees have been, I think that's a good starting point of due diligence that's taking place.
And Mr. Mayor in council, if I could just add briefly, one reason why this is structured to recommend to the council that we have basically facilitated volunteers' selection process according to categories that the council provides is that keeps us out of the Brown Act territory. That's one thing. And in response to Councilmember Barnacle's comment, the, the issue that you're talking about in the past, the, those, we, we have means for, for removal, even in the volunteer, volunteer context, the law permits us to prevent interruptions to our operations.
I'm sure that we have the legal grounds to remove someone. It's more like just the-
Avoiding the need to.
I would love to, yeah.
And that example, just as a reminder, was they were council-selected.
Yeah, I remember that. I'll just say that I'm, yeah, I'll just say I'm, I'm fine with the staff proposal that you all select them. I would love to keep it under 20. That feels really unmanageable, but it's, it's whatever. You know, as soon as it, as soon as we bring it up here, it becomes political, right? So I, if we want to keep it apolitical, I'd say delegate it to staff.
Coming across the-
I agree. I'm fine with staff making the decision.
And Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with staff and the city manager. I have total faith, and she will recognize any, any names that maybe should be a candidate or shouldn't be a candidate. And do you want my list, Mr. Mayor? This is my top 12.
Okay. So I think we'll meld that list with what's in the table and the other things that have come up. So I think staff heard you, and so we're at the minus, the 20 and minus.
I didn't specify ag. I really would like to see one or two ag or landowners in that group.
Well, land, landowner and ag are kind of different.
Well, but they are ag, you know, they might be doing ag on that property. I'm, I'm not super familiar with that, what's being raised on some of that pasture area. But we do have landowners that are also in ag business, so they're, I know I've seen sheep out there, so I don't know what else. And, and like I said, hay trucks do not belong around about, as I've been told.
We have to go driving. Councilmember DeCarle?
So right now, we're talking about selection only?
And the count, are we good with broadening the count to get all the different interests that were expressed here tonight? And leaving the final who's who to, the, the final number and the final mixture to what staff's heard from us already. Just do we, are we okay with bigger? And then are we okay with staff?
I'm fine with the larger group. I think, I mean, I would really like to see some options from staff as to how this would be done. What I don't want to see is an application process where, you know, we talked about, like, obviously, we don't want to show any bias up here of us selecting anybody, but if it's an application, any, anybody up here could go, hey, go apply to this and, and get their friends on. So, you know, I, I want to see a process where it really is fair and to some degree random, so that, you know, we can really truly get what the community thinks about this.
Noted. Councilmember Quint?
Yeah, in terms of size, I think, you know, a range of, you know, setting it to be a range of 12 to, I don't know, 12 to 20 or something, to where you're not locked into a specific number, I think would be fine, and I'm comfortable. I would prefer that staff administer the application process and the selection process. Yeah, it's, to me, it doesn't feel like it's needed to bring it up to council to vote on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Shribbs?
Yeah, I think the criteria that's being set for the folks that are going to be on here, they're going to have to be very engaged, dedicated, and willing. So we may not get as many as we might like, and they may not be as diverse as we like, but we'll get a, a set of people. And I think total flexibility to make it work so that you get the maximum diversity, the maximum quality for those folks that are willing to do the work. I'd like you to see that the extended time, because doing it over a six-month period and asking them to do lots of work in between each of these things is a bit too much. I would like to see a shorter timeline for this community engagement process. process, um, a little bit more intense, get in, get out, um, and be upfront as to the time for requirements for what's going to be expected them to jump in on the application so that they know what they're getting into. Um, and I'm okay with what's been, et cetera, the, I think it's almost too many, uh, too many different folks are like, uh, maybe getting involved here. So I'd see a little bit more reduction on that part. But if you make it a shorter timeline, maybe you can manage it that way. But I'm going to leave it up to staff to do all that. Um, I just want to make sure that, um, it's, it's functioning and working, um, and that we have the end product, which is actual development of change, whether it be the bus services or, or, because it's going to take some development, that we make sure that the consultants are talking to actual investors, developers who want to do something here. Um, that has to be a major part of this, and they have to be participating or listening and listening in, working with us upfront so that that has got to be part of the team. If they're not part of the team, um, then, then I think we're just going to be wasting. So bring them in, maybe not in the outreach group, but bring them in as part of the consultant stakeholder team of actual folks with money, ideas and, and capability of doing all the developments. Because it's not just the 50 or 100 acres out there. There's also the, um, a couple of other places that need to change. So, so a couple, maybe local folks that are a little smaller operating developers, but at least one community developer needs to be part of the team wherever that, that part of the team fits. Maybe not outreach, but somewhere else there. So other than that, I'd say go with what you've recommended, um, and add in a couple of folks that, that you see up here. See if you can get them. Uh, it's going to be tough, but, but give it your best effort and shot at it. And the only thing is maybe bring one or two from the, from the G-PAC. There may be some folks there already that fit some of these, that have already have lots of pre-knowledge that would be most beneficial. Thanks.
So I, and I concur, what you have in here is good, and what we added makes it better. So, um, it's, so it ends up bigger. Um, and, and I really appreciate Councilmember Shribbs requesting shorter, backing that up. I think that'll help engagement. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, the statement that the selection would be made by non-M Group staff. And so that's, that's, I think, an important public sentiment for us at this time. And that's kind of the consensus here. Any last, did you, Councilmember DeCarly?
Just one more last thing. Um, I know we talked too about having professionals be a part of the group, architects or people that have developed these sort of transit sites before. I don't, I don't think that's really appropriate. I mean, staff is, they're the professionals, and this is supposed to be the community's voice. Um, you know, and so I, I don't think that we should have necessarily those types of folks be a part of that committee.
Is there, is there a second for that conversation? No, I'm, I'm suggesting, I'm, I'm looking for how that resonates with the rest of the council. I'm looking, I'm not hearing a second, a resonate, that's resonating with.
Yeah, so I'm, sorry, Brian, go ahead. You were...
When did I call him, Brian? Brian?
I mean, I, if we're looking for these people to be a, a voice to the community and, and like explain the process, explain what a specific plan is, why things are being considered, I think expertise is, um, is incredibly valuable.
Right. Well, and we, we have a almost million dollar piece of expertise that's going to be a part of this, plus, plus staff.
So if there's an architect who applies that lives in our city and it meets the criteria for something, they're no, they're not...
I don't think they should be excluded, but I don't think they should be recruited.
So we don't value expertise anymore? Like, like on our, on our engagement? Like, that's like...
No, I'm saying if there's an architect that applies, that's, that's not a disqualification. But to say that, like, there was mention that somebody, somebody works on these type of transit oriented, you know, developments. Um, I don't know why someone like that has to be on there when we've already got professionals involved.
So just to, to you, let's use a totally different example. We're going to do, um, something for agriculture, and we don't include farmers on it. We include non-farmers on it. People who have never farmed before, because, um, we've got consultants who are experts in agriculture and know how to grow things and know how to, like, you know, do animal husbandry. So we don't need those people on the panel. We just need the, we just need the people who, like, just a bunch of random people. That's better?
And if I could, if I could...
No, it's not random. I mean, we've talked about...
Let's hold, um, one deep breath. I think we're talking about one seat. I mean, I think we don't want to populate with expertise of any kind without excuses. But in terms of diversity, a seat, you know, um, from different perspectives is probably a good thing. I hear your concern about so much cost to develop specific plans, and it shocks me what it costs to retain the consultant and spend a million dollars, even if it's somebody else's million dollars. But it's, um, but that's kind of the, I don't think that's the variable in this. I think what we're trying to do is have community voice. And, um, if we find investors, they probably won't be within the city. They might be within the city. But if someone brings expertise to, to the area, I'd like to make sure that they can be non-Petaluma's if they bring expertise qualification that fits the description we talked. Okay? Our thoughts?
So, so, sorry.
No, that's right.
As part of the conversation, um, I, I, I don't know, or what I'm, what I'm wondering is if Alex, you are concerned about bringing someone in that has a conflict of interest? I wasn't sure if that's where you were going, or if it was something completely different.
I mean, maybe to some degree. It's, it's, you know, really, it's creating a group that doesn't have bias. So, you know, if somebody's an architect, again, that, that however we do the selection process receives a letter or what, like, I'm not going to tell them no. But, um, but to, you know, bring people in just because of that for, for this specific one, I don't think agriculture is a great comparison to it. Um, but anyway, that's all I'm saying. It's, and, and, you know, even if it wasn't, like I said, that transit oriented developer, whoever that was, you know, that's, to me, that's too specific. You know, where there's, there's maybe already interests there of some kind. I don't know.
So my only, yeah, so my only retort would be, if we get anything out of this, um, I hope we get something that helps, it helps make it easier to build something that people in our community want to live in, right? And to the, like, I, I, you know, I think it's a long shot that we're going to get that, honestly. But if we, if we're going to have something, let's let that be the goal. And, um, and I think having some level of expertise, um, if that helps us get that, then I, I'm for that.
A great place to wrap. I think we've given you tons of direction from staff. Are we good? Yeah, okay. So, um, uh, so I, I think we, we want to be sure we end up with engagement in the community that the community respects and that provides for where we want to head as a city in terms of general plan and specific plan. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Big, important step for us. And good night. And we move to our next item. And I, I, our next item, eight, is an introduction of an ordinance, the City Council, the City of Petaluma, dedicating wall easements to Petaluma Boulevard, South to Burbank Housing, River Place at 1601 Petaluma Boulevard South. I'd like to invent, invite Kent Carruthers, city engineer, to help us with this. No PowerPoint?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Kent Carruthers with Public Works, city engineer. So, um, we have two items, two ordinances, a kind of like property cleanup, um, items should be pretty, pretty quick, hopefully. So the first one is, um, Burbank Housing built the River Place development in Petaluma Boulevard South at Crystal Lane. Um, part of that, um, construction incorporated using a wall system that required tiebacks that got built underneath, um, Petaluma Boulevard that, that now we're, we're, we're doing the cleanup and we got the exhibits. Um, and I forgot to mention that we have Burbank Housing, um, some of their team tonight for, for questions as well. Um, so that these walls were built with this tieback system. Um, the benefit for the city, other than supporting a local affordable housing, um, developer, is that these, these walls were, um, the building system allowed the construction without, like, destroying Petaluma Boulevard, um, the sidewalks and, and doing a lot of extra, um, construction that wasn't needed. The site was then, um, able to be constructed to allow for a really great, um, riverwalk system that will be hopefully connected in the next, you know, 10 or 20 years to McNair Landing and it opens up the, um, our pedestrian, um, river system, um, along, along there. So that, that, that's some of the benefits, um, and just inviting and enhancing, um, infill developments. So technically, um, we're dedicating, um, three easements, about 2,000 square feet. Um, the dedication will be wall tieback easements to the, um, it's BHDC Petaluma River Place LLC will be the, the correct, um, with what's in the, the resolution. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. And, uh, and, well, I was thinking, and so there's no loss of capacity for the city. There's no negative impact, no loss of utilization of anything.
No loss. We looked at all the, all the utilities and, um, no future utility.
Not seeing any other questions? Let's open general comment, or public comment?
I have not received any, uh, comments ahead of time, and I have not received any cards, although this is the moment if anyone would like to submit a card to speak.
Not seeing anyone rush to the front. We'll bring it back to council.
I'll be happy to move.
And we have a motion by Kater Thompson.
And I'll second.
A second by Vice Mayor now. And maybe we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I really want to appreciate you guys for coming in case we did have questions and staying till we didn't have questions. So thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation.
Do you want to be in the committee?
Thank you. Our next item, um, introduction, first reading of an ordinance, the city approving the lot line adjustment and vacation of Madison Street right away for a portion of Wizards of Metals property along the Petaluma River, 92 Lakeville Street. And again, Kent Carruthers to help us through.
Thank you. So this one's a land swap. It's a little bit more complicated than, um, than most lot line adjustments. And it's cleanup from the Army Corps project with the, the flood improvements. It's sort of the, it's just the staggering of some of the, the properties of how they ended up being. So Wizard of Metals, they approached the, the city because they have their, their main driveway that comes in, and it's, 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 um, over an old parcel that the city had, and they were interested in, um, obtaining, you know, ownership of that driveway. It's the only access they have. So they're, they, so they were interested in dedicating a swath along the Petaluma River, along the Lynch Creek Trail in exchange for this, um, the property on, um, at the driveway. So we, um, we looked at all the, the different areas and the breakdown and everything. To, to make everything even up, um, the city would dedicate a portion of Madison Street right away with a vacation. And that, that port of Madison Street is, is no longer used, it's, it hasn't been used. So it's sort of just, it's been used for construction, stockpiling and, and random things, and it was used as part of the, the river floodplain project. So to make all the, the areas break up and the usable areas break up, we would, um, we would dedicate the, the driveway for them, and then we'd get the widening of the Lynch Creek Trail and then give them, um, a portion, a strip along Madison Street so they could expand out, um, their fence. So ultimately, um, everything that needs to, that wants to be done isn't part of this. It's just, it's just a land swap so we can do proper planning, um, and design for Lynch Creek Trail, and they can, they can do what they want to do with their property. So the benefits for the city on this is like, we get a, um, a, a good swath of Lynch Creek Trail to utilize for, um, lighting, um, for, um, trees, for maintenance of the flood wall, and to widen the, um, the Lynch Creek Trail from basically the, the, um, the bridge at, at Water Street up to Lakeville Street. And then the, the property owner has also been really good with, um, with the public arts that are, that are going along there. He's really been, um, you know, a, a great partner for the city. Um, and so there's, there's little facets of drainage and things like that that we'll be able to control once we have control of this with the swath of Lynch Creek Trail. So that's, that's the benefit for the city. Um, that's, um, so it's about point two acres of usable that, that goes, switches back and forth. And then it's a lot line adjustment and a vacation and a dedication. So there's, there's a series of things that will happen if, if it's approved by council. So happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shribbs?
Okay, just a, a few things. Just looking at the size, just so I can get this correct. Um, so the one on the, the Madison, um, that's going to expand their fence line out to that area so they have a larger area to store things and do things with. So basically increasing their property size.
Correct.
How, about how many square feet is that area that they would increase?
That was...
Because it seems like a fair, not a fair trade in size. Anyway, I just, I'm checking.
Oh, so actually, yeah, we're, we're getting more because their debt, their property extends out into the river. So that's why we broke it down into usable areas.
So you're saying they, they actually own the Lynch Creek Trail portion?
Yes.
That's in that section. They actually own that land. And we have easement on it.
Yes.
Which is not just a tiny little...
Narrow easement on it. So we're, we're looking to get a large swath of...
Okay, because the map I saw only had this tiny little section of, of, of grass outside their fence as being swapped, not the entire Lynch Creek Trail. Okay, so the entire, that entire area then, then we become city owned. Okay, then we get the Madison, uh, section there. Because I thought, okay, they need, the other thing that was mentioned was a, um, uh, having a second outlet, be able to drive out, because the ramp that they have now is sloped pretty steep, and they have to come in and out. And there was a problem with them getting out with certain equipment, and they needed a second exit. Would that be from Madison to Copeland? Would that, is that the exit they're talking about?
Um, that's not part, like, access point. So the main access point, what they're after is taking the access off of Lakeville. So as part of a different entitlement would be some sort of access off into Madison.
Are you saying access on of Lakeville or off? Right. If it would be off, that means it's removed? They remove the access from Lakeville?
No, they would take the actual...
Okay.
...land where the driveway is now, the city owns.
Because that's right next to the train tracks, very close to it. And so they still have to get in and out based on the train running in and out on that. But it's still pretty steep, and there was a reference to having a second exit possibility. So that's why I'm asking about those words.
That's not part, that's not part of this, this, this land swap. So that, that would be worked out later.
Okay. Is it possible? I know there's been, uh, strong requests, uh, from the folks that use the Lynch Creek Trail, who would like to be able to go there. There's already the fence down to get in and come across the, uh, the, where the granary is, that there's freight train, but they're able to come, which is Copeland. So Madison turns into Copeland. I'm not sure if we actually own the Madison Street that connects with Co- Oakland. So if this land swap is being done, could we at the same time actually have a plan to actually, um, come in from the trail, Lynch Creek Trail, through the fence now to, uh, to Copeland directly so that we have a direct access, so we have an actual bicycle access path there, which is on our ATP plan? Can we have that in part of this development somehow?
Not, not as part of this development. We have a surveyor looking at all those different parcels that are, are broken up. This, this land swap is solely with, with the, with this developer, with...
Right. Because it looks like that's just right, uh, the train tracks, um, the freight track.
Because it looks like that's just where the train tracks, the freight train, the little, what's it called, the spud? No, spar, the spar that comes down. So, it's between, it still has plenty of space between that and the spar. There's still plenty of room for the, for the spar to function, I assume, on that piece of land. So, that is not, not being used. I don't even think I've seen, because my son works right next door and so I'm there often enough to, and I've never seen a car parked there, although it may have been used for folks to be out there, that section. So, that would be good. I just want to make sure that we retain the capacity to get from Lynch Creek Trail to Copeland Street and that that is a really positive thing that we're working on now because that's a true huge connector to get to the transit area from Lynch Creek. That's probably the safest route. Because I take it off of myself, I go through the fence. Okay? So, I just want to make sure that is part of our plan following up on this land swap, that that's still in the plan.
Yes.
Okay, good. Just want to check on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, then we'll go to public comment. And not seeing anyone coming forward for public comment, then we will close public comment, bring it back to council. And we have a motion by Kater Thompson.
And I'll second that motion.
Second by Vice Mayor Now. And roll call vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kent, for the presentations. And with that, we are adjourned for the evening.